Monday, Wednesday. Yeah. Boston. Shouldn't. So. Teacher. You're Michigan. I saw. Auto shop, wood shop. We got a full house? We've got, uh, the agenda?
It's all amended.
Okay.
Thank you, thanks for inviting me.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I would like to call the Peoria Public Schools Board of Education meeting for March 20th, 2017 to order. Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Walter?
Here.
Mrs. Jackson?
Here.
Mrs. Haste? Ms. Bates?
Here.
Ms. Shaw?
Here.
Dr. Davis and Avila?
Still here.
Mr. Adler?
Here.
Mrs. Ross?
Here. Thank you, would you join me in the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like an approval of the minutes from February 21st, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Dr. Davis and Avila?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six ayes, motion period.
Okay. Okay, did I miss that? Okay, next on the agenda are the announcements, anyone have any announcements? Ms. Jackson?
Registration for the 2017-2018 school year, I bet everybody's looking forward to it. Let's make sure every public school student is ready to learn on the first day of school. Three things are needed prior to each new school year. One, registration for every student, new and returning. Two, health requirements completed for incoming kindergarteners, sixth grade, ninth grade, 12th grade, and transfer students. Fees paid for every student. Mark your calendars for our registration hub dates at Manuel Academy, Peoria High School, Richwoods High School, and Glen Oak Community Learning Center on Tuesday, July 25, Thursday, July 27, Wednesday, August 2. Registration and some service, services also will be available at Back Pat Peoria at the Dream Center on Saturday, July 29. Parents and guardians are encouraged to make appointments now for physicals, immunizations, dental exams, and eye exams. Call your family doctor or contact our partners at Peoria City County Health Department, Unity Point Methodist in-school health clinics at Treewind, K through 6, Harrison Community Learning Center, and Manuel Academy or Heartland Clinic to book your appointment now. Finally, parents and guardians can complete registration for each student and pay for any necessary fees from home, work, or anywhere you have internet access by knowing your family access username and password. The primary guardian entered into the Family One box in Skyward is the only guardian that will have access to fully registered students. If you have questions, please contact the school office for the 2017-18 school year.
Thank you, other announcements, Mr. Walter?
Yes, summer school registration is open for the Peoria Public Schools' summer school program. Programs for kindergarten through high school students will be held at Glen Oak Community Learning Center, Harrison Community Learning Center, Thomas Jefferson Primary School, and Peoria High School. All programs are free for students who live in the Peoria Public School boundaries. For primary and middle school students, the programs will consist of morning academics and afternoon recreation and includes free breakfast and lunch. Most programs will run June 5th through July 27th. Students must participate in the morning academic sessions in order to participate in the afternoon sessions, which will include fine arts, sports, and field trips. For complete information to go register online, go to www.pioriapublicschools.org/summer school, or call 309-672-6758. Students who register by April 21st are guaranteed transportation. I also have a second announcement. The RHS Syrian event. Richwoods High School Muslim Student Association and Save the Children Action Network joined forces last week to raise money to assist Syrian children in refugee camps. The event featured Syrian and Middle Eastern music, Middle Eastern food, a henna booth, and information on the Syrian refugee crisis and activities of relief organizations. A speaker from the Islamic Center of Peoria spoke at the event. Guests made donations to scan through its website or with cash and checks at the event. The event raised $1,500. I just wanted to compliment Richwoods, I went to that event. It was very enlightening and it was refreshing to see students willing to take a stand and go for something that really, quite frankly, is an international tragedy. And I was very impressed with the kids there and I was glad that Richwoods did it and I'm glad Peoria Public Schools were part of it, thank you.
Thank you, other announcements, Mr. Shaw?
Reminder that parent teacher conferences will be held this coming Thursday evening, March 23rd, and Friday morning, March 24th. Please contact your child's school to make an appointment. During parent teacher conferences, conferences on Thursday night, Peoria Public Schools will also hold an organ and tissue donation, donation registration drive. Volunteers will be available to help people register to become an organ and tissue donor. The organ and tissue donation registration drive is chaired by Lindberg Middle School teacher Christine Hickman and Mike Plunkett, former Peoria Public School principal and recipient of a donor heart. Nationally, nearly 120,000 people, including 2,000 children, are waiting on the list of transplants. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Bach?
Good evening, everyone, this is regarding the PTO council. I had the honor to attend the quarterly district PTO council meeting on February 27th. More than half of our school PTOs were represented by their leaders at the meeting. It was a great meeting as we worked to better communicate and develop PTOs at each building. Dr. Karat presented an update on the activities of Alignment Peoria and outlined four specific goals for the Peoria Public Schools. Increasing graduation rates, increasing family and community involvement, addressing student and community health, and improving college and career readiness. On the topic of college and career readiness, Dr. Karat pointed out that although approximately 66% of US high school students go straight to college after high school, only 25% finish college. Job growth in coming decades is predicted to be in fields requiring post-high school two-year certification as opposed to a four-year degree. These factors may require a paradigm shift in education. The PTO council also heard two preliminary presentations that we will hear later tonight and was able to ask questions and give feedback, including the three-tier bus schedule and the graduation credit proposal. PTO council has submitted paperwork to become an official 501(c)(3) organization and also become incorporated so that it can provide umbrella services to all of our schools and ensure that support is provided to keep each PTO active and ready to serve its school.
Mr. Walter?
Last week's Parent University held at Peoria Public Library highlighted the Peoria Public Schools' fine arts education programs with performances by Peoria High School Preparatory School for the Arts and Roosevelt Magnet School Choral Band and Orchestra and Drama Students, and with an exhibit of visual artwork by students from all schools in library's first-floor gallery. The budding artist gallery exhibit will remain open until March 30th. Parent University performances included a preview of Peoria High School's musical, Into the Woods, which will be performed tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM. 580 students and parents participated in the event. The final Parent University of this 2016-2017 school year, hosted by Rolling Acres Middle School and Heinz Primary School, will be held at the Peoria Riverfront Museum on April 20th.
Okay, any other announcements? Okay, thank you. Community contributions. Who's going, I'm gonna do that? Community contributions? No, not, not the, not the, I mean, okay. Okay, this evening, we present our community contribution award to several individuals. Our student board member will recognize a few of them as part of the student recognition. Three of our community contribution awards tonight go to individual volunteers that have given tirelessly to several district projects. Over the past year, Regional Superintendent of Schools, Ms. Beth Derry, and retired administrators, Dr. Tom Simpson and Ms. Cheryl San Philip have contributed to numerous Peoria Public School initiatives, including the attendance counts campaign, the formation of the Alignment Peoria, as well as research and advocacy in competency-based education and leading to a team to review our district's graduation requirements, credit requirements, which we will hear more about later on tonight. Their combined expertise continues to produce positive and innovative efforts which we, will Peoria Public Schools students, will benefit Peoria Public Schools students for years to come. Would Ms. Beth Derry, Ms. Cheryl San Philip, and Dr. Simpson please come to the podium to accept a token of our appreciation Dr. Karat has for you? We appreciate the... We appreciate your time that you've spent and the commitment to, and we thank you very much on behalf of the board. She's timing everybody now.
All I would like to say is I share too, the PFT...
Is your mic on? Okay, that's good, now.
I consider this part of my job. Thank you for the recognition, but I just want you to know that Peoria Public Schools is so very important to me and is number one in my heart, and anytime you need me to be there, anytime you need my support, I'll do whatever it takes to make this district successful, so thank you for letting me be a part of your very work. It is my pleasure to give back to Peoria Public Schools. After, after being a student of Peoria Public Schools, having my entire career at Peoria Public Schools, and a lifelong resident of Peoria, there's nothing I'm more committed to right now than giving back to Peoria Public Schools and helping Dr. Karat, the Board of Education, and her administrative team.
Do the most they can for the students and the families of Peoria Public Schools. Thank you so much for the recognition, it's not necessary, this comes from my heart.
This is unexpected, thank you very much. I've spent probably over half my life in Peoria Public Schools, went to, through Peoria Public Schools' grade school, graduated from Manuel High School, got out of college, came right back to the district, spent about 40 years working in the district, and I love the district and I just want it to be successful, thank you very much.
Mrs. Derry, Mrs. San Philip, Dr. Simpson, the community, they're correct, they'll do anything for Peoria Public Schools, they've saved us so much money with the free consultant advice that they've given, they're actually working with us on a variety of important projects, you'll hear about the graduation plan this evening, and attendance count is another big one, and the competency-based proposal, I mean, the list goes on and on and on. I can call them and seek advice and get assistance, and again, they're just doing this from the bottom of their hearts, they're not asking for any compensation whatsoever. So, just a small, I know, we know it's not necessary, but it's just a small gesture to say, thank you, thank you, thank you for assisting Peoria Public Schools in actually realizing the vision of inspiring, preparing, and graduating young people to be successful in life, in college, and in the world of work, so, thanks a lot.
And on a, on a personal level, Ms. San Phillips, we go back a long way, you've done great work, and, and Dr. Simpson, you know, you're out there mentoring and doing things that you never recognized for, so thank you all, and Beth and I, we've been working on trying to do some initiatives in the community, so I'm familiar with the commitment that you all have, thank you. Anybody, any other comments? Okay, thank you. Adopt a school. Sarah? Ms. Oakford?
Hello. My name is Sarah Oakford, and thank you all for coming to celebrate the adoptions, I'm sure that's why you're here, but, anyway, I'm gonna share with you a little bit about the adopt a school program because you're here, so I can, you're captive. So, the adopt a school program brings businesses, organizations, and community groups together with schools in a collaborative effort that enriches student learning. Through tutoring, mentoring, in-kind, or financial contributions, and a connection with strong, positive role models, the students of Peoria Public Schools benefit from a broad spectrum of knowledge and resources. Volunteers come from large or small companies, from churches, from organizations, and from all walks of life. Their personal touch, enthusiasm, and dedication are of immeasurable value to the children of Peoria. Currently, we have 56 active partners and 38 new partners this year. So, we have two of them here tonight, and I wanted to share with you, I'm gonna have them share with you what they're doing at the schools because I have two really good speakers here tonight, so I'm gonna let them share with me. I'm sorry, 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 I didn't know they were coming up. So, this is Sergeant Graves and Sergeant Blasco, and they're from Illinois Air National Guard, and where's Brett? There he is, sorry. And Principal Brett Hare from Richwoods, this is a partnership that we formed this year, and they are hoping to get into all of the high schools, so I just wanna have him speak for a minute, what you guys have been doing.
Good evening, everyone, I just like to hand clap, so I had to go for the opportunity, but I wanna thank Mrs. Oakford for reaching out to the Illinois Air National Guard to have a footprint in some of the high schools, they go hand-in-hand their program with what we want to do as far as community involvement and getting young people active and having mentorship with the, with the students. So, the opportunities that we're providing to the guard are endless, but we want to be able to mentor the youth, give them opportunities, and let them know that programs and assistance are out there, and just like she said, so they can see successful role models, not only within ourselves, but other unit members that we have. So, we also thank the Richwoods administration for allowing us to have that footprint in the schools and to come in there to work with the students and to have that program done, so thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
The next partnership is with Methodist College and Sterling School, so I'm gonna have them come up as well. And there's kind of a, why aren't you guys coming up? And this is Andre Allen, and he is a great supporter of the foundation, so I've asked him to speak a few words.
Good evening, everyone, first off, I just wanna say it's a blessing to have this partnership with the Peoria Public Schools Foundation. As an alumni of District 150 and an alumni of Sterling Middle School, it was a blessing for me to come back to Peoria, have great employment with Methodist College, and then also to have the support of Methodist College to support my former middle school. And so I think definitely it's important for me to give back, because Sterling gave me so many great memories and it blessed my life, so I'm glad that we have this partnership. I look forward to us doing some great things with Sterling Middle School. Recently, last week, we donated some brain food to help them with their park testing, so granola bars, water bottles, mints, number-two pencils, things of that nature, and we're right now also working on helping them with a school dance to conclude the school year after this tough testing that they've been going through, so look forward to this partnership. I appreciate my support at Methodist, and I couldn't be more blessed to be in this predicament, thank you.
Thank you all for everything you do for Peoria Public Schools, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Susan Gorchnich? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're up.
Just trying to mess with me, Mrs. Ross.
Susan's gonna talk about the accelerated reader school recognition.
Good evening, President Ross, Dr. Karat, and board members, and everyone here, we're here to celebrate readings. So, each year during the week of February 27th to March 3rd, we acknowledge the Read Across America Day for a full week, and we encourage independent readings so that schools compete in a friendly competition. Each school devotes some time to independent reading and then encourages students to take accelerated reader tests covering the texts that they read. There's a primary school competition and a middle school competition. At the end of the week, we analyze the individual school's data and we determine three things. One, the percentage of the student body that read a book and took an AR test. Two, the student body's passing rate, or the percentage of tests that were passed with a score of 85% or higher. Three, the percentage of the student body that took a test and passed a test. So tonight, we have the top three schools from both primary and middle that we'd like to share with you, and the top school will be, in each category, will be given, given a nice traveling plaque that they get to host during their year. So, the top three schools for primary were, at third place, Keller Primary School, 79% of students took the AR tests, 91% of those passed at 85% or higher, and 72% of the student body took and passed an AR test. Second place was Whittier Primary School, percentage of students that took the AR test was 86%, 89% of those students passed at 85% or higher, and 77% of the student body took and passed an AR test. Our first place winner is Northmore Primary School, 89% of their students took AR tests, 91% of their students passed at 85% or higher, and 81% of their student body took and passed an AR test. So, I'd like to bring Northmore up right now and have them tell you a little bit about promoting reading at Northmore.
Good evening, and thank you, we have two students, two of our top readers, this is Abigail Loman and Abby, I said it backwards, didn't I? Abby Loman and Addie Coleman, sorry about that, I got them backwards, so you wanna tell them some things that we did? Nope, they're gonna be, they're gonna be shy. They're, they're good readers, we just really focused on reading every day, we talked about it in our classrooms, we read in our classrooms, we read at home, we talked about it at lunch, and we decided we wanted to be number one, and we did it, didn't we? And they did a great job.
All right, so the top three schools for middle school, third place, Mark Bills, they have 58% of their students take an AR test, 98% of those students passed at 85% or higher, 57% of the student body took and passed an AR test. Second place, Roosevelt Magnet School, 69% of the students took an AR test, 93% of those were at 85% or higher, and 64% of the student body took and passed an AR test. First place this year was Harrison Primary School, or Harrison Elementary, 83% of students took an AR test, 83% of them passed at 85% or, I'm sorry, 83% or higher, and 69% of the students took and passed an AR test. So, can we have the representation from Harrison come up?
Share with what you do, please, congratulations.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, I just wanna make a note, for the primary, we were also fifth place, so we're very proud of that as well. But our goal throughout the year was to hit 10,000 points, and currently, we are at 8,000, so this year, we have really encouraged our students to read more and also take our AR tests. We're seeing that our readers at Harrison Community Learning Center is out of this world, so they are really working hard to read our tests but also comprehend what they're reading. So, every day, their goal is, when they have time, to read, because readers are leaders. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll go to most improved attendance in February.
Thank you, President Ross, actually, I, I've seen the representative from Manuel High School, actually Manuel Academy. School, actually Manuel Academy, Mrs. Young. Are you here? Ms. Young, I would like Ms. Young, Ms. Clark, and Ms. Andrews. Are you here, please? Come up to the podium. Ms. Clark, Ms. Young, Ms. Andrews. This year, the attendance, as we referenced earlier with Dr. Simpson and Mrs. San Philip, they were recently recognized. This year, we made an intentional effort to, and the two of them, Dr. Simpson, Mrs. San Philip, to really work with each building administrator at over 27 buildings, to have them reflect on a fun plan to improve attendance of their buildings. And actually, our district-wide goal is, is to have a minimum of 95% of school in attendance every day. And we know the attendance rate is important, because students are more likely to succeed in academics when they attend school consistently. It is very, very difficult for teachers and the class to build skills and for students to progress if a large number of students are not in attendance consistently. So this year, we have made an attempt, the board and the leadership team at Central Office, we've made an attempt to encourage and to recognize the top three schools on a monthly basis that have done, that have actually, they have the top three attendance rates in terms of the highest three attendance rates, right? And so this month, for the month of February, actually, and I think these are three, Mrs. San Philip, Dr. Simpson, I think these are three new schools, which is pretty cool. I mean, because sometimes we've seen repeats. So this is the first time Manuel is being recognized, the first time Treewind is being recognized, the first time for the year Roosevelt. This is awesome. And the gains are significant also. So let us start with Roosevelt's. Roosevelt is, actually, I'm sorry, Treewind. Ms. Andrews, we're sorry, we'll start with you. You came in third place. Treewind's attendance last year was 90.8%. And this year, same time, just new year, it is 92.4%. So you have experienced a 1.57 gain, which puts you in the top three, place three. Can you share with us what you and your faculty, your kids and families are doing to really keep this thing going, so that kids are there, so that we can teach them?
Well, first off, we bug them, bug them, bug them. If the kids don't show up, they're probably getting calls from one or two staff members, just trying to find out why they're not there and what the school can do to help them improve their own child's attendance. We've recognized parents. I want to thank Ms. Beth Derry, because not only did she hit the ground, boots to the ground at the beginning of the year, and go and do some door-to-door sort of, you know, let's improve your child's attendance at the beginning of the year, but she also has supplied us with financial support to recognize our students as well as providing lots of coffee and things, because we had courtyard PTO meetings, meeting the parents outside before the kids were brought in, and just talking a lot about attendance and the importance of the kids being there. So it's truly been a school-wide effort. Kudos to my staff. I know some of them are watching. Just want to thank them for, you know, making sure that those calls and everything are made. And so just thank you to everybody for all of your... And huge thank you to you two. You know, when we make gains, I email them, and they applaud us along with our community. So just thank you very much for your support.
Amazing, Ms. Andrews. Hard work pays off. So congratulations. And keep it up. And you're right, I forgot to mention, Ms. Beth Derry actually has been involved with, in the summer, last summer, worked with the other two partners in crime and provided supports and actually meals while they, everybody, there's a large group, right, a variety of stakeholders from the community, teachers, just kind of talking about putting this plan together for success, the attendance plan together. So second place, Roosevelt, last year, 2016, the attendance in February was 88.81. And 2017, February, the attendance rate has increased significantly by 3.32%, which is 92.13%. Ms. Clark, what are you guys doing? That's amazing. 3%?
Well...
3% is actually really amazingly significant. We were going for 2%. You've surpassed that.
Well, bribery. So I have to be honest. Dr. Simpson and Ms. San Philip awarded us with a $250 grant, which was awesome. And Denise Smith cooks and bakes snickerdoodles every week for kids that come in every day for a week. And we also bribed them this month, because Mayor Artis gave us 100 tickets to go to March Madness Experience, so we could take the kids down there if they had zero misses, zero tardies, and zero referrals. So there's just a lot of things. You know, you get kids to come to school, you hook them, and you celebrate what they're doing right. So that's bribery and a smile.
Thank you. As the leader of Roosevelt, this is amazing, and we appreciate you and all of the work that you're doing with your team. So thanks, and keep it up. That's very, very good. And so Ms. Young, come up, please. Manuel's attendance rate for 2016 of February was 82.32%. And this year, February 2017, it has increased to 86.84%, which is a 4.5 to 4. Let's see, a 5-point gain, if you wronged it up, right? Kids, do the nearest whole number. So that is, I have never seen, Mrs. San Philip, Dr. Simpson, Beth, it's a good one. Yep, 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 yep. Ms. Young?
So we're doing some of the same things. Food is always a hook for high schoolers. Mama Bear being me, being in the hallway, making sure we get them to class. We have tardy sweeps. We tie attendance to eligibility, so that they can attend extracurricular activities. So again, just trying to put some additional incentives. Definitely, our staff is out there making those phone calls to parents, but also trying to make the connection between school to work or school to college, that you have to be in school. And the same thing applies when you get into the workforce. So again, kudos to my team for continuing to plug away and encourage our students to make learning a part of their everyday commitment.
Thank you. Are any of your staff present with you tonight? Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the Student Board Member, Student Recognition, and Student Board Member, Ms. Bates, will present on that.
Good evening, everyone. Along with culinary arts teacher Yeti Madema and Sodexo General Manager Mark Streamer, the WCTC Restaurant Management Culinary Teams recently competed in Chicago at the Pro Start Competition. They did very well this year, and at this time, I would like to invite Ms. Madema to the podium to share more about their experience.
Hi. I'm Ms. Yeti, or Ms. Madema. And I teach culinary arts at Woodrow Career and Technical Center. So here we have a whole lot of kids in white, right? These are chefs and management team of the 2017 Pro Start Competition. Just really quick, what the competition did. There are 72 Pro Start Schools here in Illinois that teach the Pro Start Curriculum, which is a two-year program, getting these kids ready to go either onto a culinary school or go into the workforce. So we did really well this year. We placed fourth with our culinary team in the state, and then we ended up placing third with our management team. So culinary got to cook for you guys this evening. I hope you really enjoyed it. We sure enjoyed showing what we can do, right? So, and now management is gonna show a very quick intro of the verbal presentation that they did. Now, along with that, they worked very, very hard this year, along with our team mentors. So we have Mark Streamer here with Sodexo, and Mr. Andrew Van De Way, if you please want to come up. So Mr. Andrew Van De Way, he is the Food and Beverage Director for Savor Peoria Civic Center. And he, and his chef, Leo and Sarah, his catering manager, really helped us out, in addition to Mark, of course, that came back for a second year, wanting some more punishment of working hard every Wednesday and Saturday for the past three months. So we appreciate really what you two did. So we want to clap for you guys.
Hi, my name is Yatiko Sargent. I was the General Manager for our restaurant.
Hi, my name is Asha Birds Johnson, and I was the Sales and Marketing Director.
Hi, my name is Simone Holmes, and I was the Maitre D.
Hello, I am Executive Chef Sandra Somaravicious.
With great food comes great power.
My job for our competition was basically to make sure that our restaurant was profitable, which means that we have to make money in order to do anything by the food. We had a 33% food cost, and I was also in charge of hiring and staffing.
As the Sales and Marketing Director, I was responsible for advertising and promoting our business. And I was the person that got people through the door.
All right, as the Maitre D, I oversee the front of the house staff. I am the one that's in charge of making reservations for our restaurant, and I'm the first impression you'll see through the door, the first smile you'll see. I'll make sure you guys have a good time at our restaurant.
As the Executive Chef, I oversee the back of the house, and I work on sanitation skills with the workers and make sure that they know how to make all the menu items in our menu. All right, I think that's everything.
So they actually had to do four different presentations, and they open up every presentation just like this. The funny thing, I'm sure you guys noticed the backflip, we actually had a shoe flying off during the competition, and it hit the wall about 20 feet away, and then it landed like right in front of the judges. So, but they worked through it, and then with our men... So I'm very proud of that, because you never know what's gonna happen in real life, right? And the same with our culinary team, we had a couple of hiccups as well. We had, one of our team members ended up in the hospital the day of the competition. So we had our reserves, having to step in and learn an entire new dish, including, if you wanted to use chicken there, you didn't just get a piece of chicken, you actually had to break down that whole chicken. If you wanted to use salmon, you had to break down a filleted whole salmon. So that was a very hard thing to learn just last minute. And then we got there, and guess what? Our hot plate, we only had two hot plates that were given to us by the competition, and our hot plate went down, one of them. So we only had one hot plate that they had to share with four kids cooking and one kid coaching. So they really learned how to roll with the punches, and I'm just very proud. So thank you for letting us do this.
Ms. Yeti, while they're doing that, would you please tell the audience what they prepared for the board dinner today?
Okay, so just to make you guys all a little bit jealous, but don't worry, you can come on Thursday and sample our food. But we prepared this evening for the board. We had an apple and jicama salad with a dressing of jalapenos, rice wine vinegar, what else was in there, Larry? It was your dish. So it was kind of like a spicy sweet dressing on a salad, and we served that with a seared sea scallop over that. For the entree, we prepared a duck cell stuffed chicken breast. With that, we had a portobello mushroom stuffed ravioli with wilted spinach and crisp seared pancetta. And then for dessert, Talia over here, she made a 25, I'm not kidding you, a 25-layer crepe cake that was covered in an orange and chocolate granache, served with a gremetier and orange reduction. So, thank you. So that was it. I hope you guys enjoyed it.
So as you know, we are, all of us around the horseshoe here are trying to stay awake, right? Thank you so much.
Congratulations again to all the chefs and great work in Chicago. The guidance and mentorship of food service professionals is vital in helping students prepare for the rigors of the Pro Start Competition. This evening, we present a community contribution award to Andrew Van De Way, Regional Director of Food and Beverage, Savor Peoria, at the Peoria Civic Center, for his work as a mentor for Woodrow Career and Technical Center Culinary Arts students who competed on March 4th in the Pro Start Invitational in Chicago. Thank you, Mr. Van De Way, and the culinary teams at Woodrow Career and Technical Center.
Just real brief, if I could, I just want to congratulate the students. It's absolutely fabulous to see how they progressed from November through March and their dedication to the program. You know, as an industry professional, and I represent the food service at the Peoria Civic Center, we always look to, I worry about who's gonna do my job in 25 years. And I see we've got a recruiting class here, and I know the future of it. So kudos to the public school program for putting on a program like this. Certainly, when I grew up going to the school, there was nothing with regards to culinary education or management. So I learned the school hard-knock, so it's great to be able to see these students be able to get the education. Thank you.
Our next student recognition is for future chefs. Our culinary students also assisted their younger peers in a recent competition. Nine Peoria Public School fifth-grade students advanced to the Peoria Public Schools Future Chefs Competition Saturday, March 11th, at Lincoln K-8. Students prepared their healthy comfort food recipes from 9:00 until 10:45 a.m., and then were judged and awarded by a slate of jurors. Sodexo General Manager Mark Streamer, I'm sorry, is here to introduce the top three winners from the competition.
We're gonna step out from behind here if we can. Come on up, girls. So I have with me two of our competitors. We had eight that showed up that day. And as was said, this was, our theme this year was healthy comfort food. We've done desserts, and we've done breakfast and lunch. But what I found, if you ask a fifth grader what comfort food is, you get a wide variety of items. Up here today, we have Kia, Kaia, excuse me, Kaia, who had a balsamic vinegar... Up here today, we have Kia, who, Kaia, excuse me, Kaia, who had a balsamic vinegar chicken breast with potatoes and a fruit kebab, and Berlin made a taco, beef taco. We had apple oatmeal raisin cookies, we had energy bites with lasagna, we had alfredo, we had just a wide variety of items. And one of the pictures you can see up here, the kids are just crowded around the stove cooking. It was, it was fast and furious. It really is an iron chef competition for kids. I think everybody had a lot of fun, and we appreciate all of our judges, all of the people back of the house who made it happen for us. We had Chef Schutman again this year, and our kids are good, our top three scoring kids, our gold medalist, silver medalist, and top scoring bronze will be on The Living Well Show. It was going to be last Friday, but we got bumped by something that happens in March, some kind of madness. So, we're going to be on on the 31st, so set your DVRs and, and record that, The Living Well Show, 4 o'clock on the 31st. The kids will be up there preparing again, but we're real proud of them. We hope they have a lot of fun, and it's, you know, it's real-life experience. They get to work in a competitive environment, in a professional kitchen. We start every event with what we call boot camp, culinary boot camp. So, they learn about how to work safe in a professional kitchen, hand washing, cross-contamination. But all the culinary kids that helped out, we really appreciate. That's an extra learning opportunity for these kids and the culinary kids working as the sous chefs for our future chefs. So, I really appreciate that collaboration with the Culinary Arts Department. It really helps to make it happen. And like I said, it was fast and furious. We were right down to the wires, and our judges did a great job. And I got to tell you, the, the point spread between those top three was a whopping four points out of 100 and some points. So, it was really close competition, and we enjoy doing it every year. Thanks, girls.
Congratulations to all the middle school contestants on a great event. Let's give them a round of applause. For several years, CGN Global, an adoptive school partner with Washington Gifted Middle School, has conducted a capstone project modeled on the TV reality, reality show Shark Tank with Washington eighth grade students. Over the course of six weeks, CGN Global representatives coached Washington students through the project, which focuses on supply chain distribution. Working in teams, students are asked to create a study aid product to be marketed to middle school, high school, and college-age students. Students create a business plan detailing the benefits of their product, and how the product will be manufactured, packaged, marketed, and distributed to consumers. Each group of students presents their project to the CGN team, and winning projects are announced at a pizza party. The Shark Tank Project requires students to use analytic and critical thinking skills, creativity, collaborative teamwork, collaborative teamwork skills, and to present and defend their ideas. Tonight, Dr. Karat is here to present a community contribution award to CGN Global Representative, Mr. Roush, teacher Bob Weinrich, and Principal Dave Poles to the podium to accept their award and announce the student winners.
Congratulations, and thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Who gets this? Congratulations. Mr. P, thank you so much. Would you like to make some comments, please?
I am Tom Roush from CGN Global. On behalf of my associates, Envita, and Lath, and the rest of the CGM firm, thank you for this recognition. Most importantly, I'd like to thank Mr. Weinrich and, and the staff at Washington School, and most importantly, the students. They were amazing. The work they put in, the team coordination was very impressive. I don't even see that sometimes at the college level, so we were very impressed. But more importantly, one more comment is, you know, supply chain and logistics has never really entered into the academic picture early on in people's careers. And one of the things we want to promote at CGN is to make sure that students start to understand early on that this is a very important career path. It's not going away, and we're always looking for challenging, and students that can come into our practice and help grow the area of supply chain and logistics. I think that was, we saw a lot of potential in the students that were there, and hope that some of them go on and go ahead and get degrees in supply chain logistics. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. My name is Bob Weinrich. I teach eighth, seventh and eighth grade at Washington Gifted. And Tom, thank you very much for coming out. I know it's a big commitment of time. They were out seven consecutive weeks to work with the kids all afternoon. So, this fits into our next generation of science standards as a cross-cutting activity. It applies different levels of, of science and engineering, model building, and the kids did a wonderful job. So, without any further ado, tonight, we have with us, we had a tie for second place, so Ethan, if you'd come up, and Lilly, if you would come up. Ethan, if you, if you could tell us just in 30 seconds or less, what was your product that you sold?
So, we made a type of energy bar that would like give you energy if you needed to do like homework, and if you just like didn't want to go out and buy coffee, you just eat our bar and it give you like some energy so you could finish it.
Excellent. Very good.
We have a medal for Ethan.
Oh, Ethan.
Congratulations. Proud of you.
So, Lilly, would you, can you give us a 30 seconds, 30-second synopsis of your team's product?
Okay. So, we figured with all of the projects and homework and assignments that we get during middle school and high school and even college, we thought that there needs to be a little bit of a de-stress kind of method. So, our box was provided with things like incense and stress balls, just to lower the level of stress and overwhelming that we get.
I like that. The purchase. Congratulations, I'm proud of you. Keep it up, okay?
And we have four representatives from our first-place team, Madison, Lauren, Emily, and Aditi, if you'd come forward. Last one up here has to talk.
Seriously, who would like to speak on behalf of your team? Go ahead.
Hi, guys, I'm Aditi. Well, so our product was basically a study drink mix that we thought would help energize students' brains and minds to help them with studying, or just trying to figure out methods to help cope with school. So, we hope that it will boost your energy in your mind. Yeah. So, we thought of having a really creative name, so we decided to do Not Your Mama's Caffeine.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
While we're transitioning, I want to recognize any parents that are available. I see a lot of the parents have already left. We were going to do it at the end. Any parents of students that are, that have received awards so far, present? Stand, please. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Bates, has she finished? Are you all done? Okay.
District presentations.
Okay. District presentations. Mr. Dibble? This is a solar presentation?
Yeah. I'm trying to drop the screen.
Oh, it doesn't drop from there.
Oh, did I drop?
No, we're not that technology.
Okay. Well, I act like it's not solar.
It's not solar yet.
That's a good time to transition.
This is something we've been working on, building grounds for a little while, and we're trying to bring solar to a couple of our schools, and hopefully, hopefully more in the future. Okay, well, originally, when we started this, well, here's some of the benefits of going with solar for the district. We can hedge against future pricing. We know, we know that utilities aren't going to go down, so this is a way to keep them steady, at least part of them anyway. We should be saving 1.1 million over 20 years, hopefully maybe even more, be leaders in the community on the solar front, and there's a lot of environmental benefits to go with that, to make, to benefit the school district, but benefit society, benefit the community. So, here was our original plan when we started. We're going to put a system on Richwoods and Manuel with a smaller, a smaller system, and this is, as you can see, the savings was pretty, pretty small, really, 1,400 a year, but it was more, a lot of this is to help the students, give them, you know, you know, build curriculum in with this. So, in December, the future energy bill created a lot of opportunities, and those opportunities have been, it's very, I don't know, the, for investors, anyway, they, it's lucrative, anyway, for them. So, what they're doing is they're investing in, in the renewable energy. So, the state, by 2025, wants to increase their renewables by 25%, and, which is $7 to $10 billion investment. So, and this is supposed to create more jobs also in the solar industry. Well, the new plan is to go with, to start out with a small plan on Richwoods and Manuel because of the time, and to get that in place so you can, so curriculum can start building around some of this, and then add to this, and actually have one, when it's all said and done, a one-megawatt system between Richwoods and Manuel, which you can see is pretty substantial, about 53% of our energy saved, 32,000 a year saved. And if we were to buy that system, that's what it would cost, $2.5 million. So, really, for no upfront cost, and an educational benefit and a financial benefit, it's, it's pretty beneficial for the school district. So, here's, here's the plan at Richwoods. All the blue is the solar panels. And then there's, there's Manuel's plan. Now, here's some of the, the benefits of solar. Now, if you go to need.org, there's a lot of free teaching tools for all grades, and there's also a lot, there's just a lot of free, free information out there on not just solar, all, all energy. So, Farmington, a few years back, they, they did their system on, and every one of their south-facing roofs has solar panels on it, and there's, and this is equivalent to about what Richwoods is going to get. And so, that's the way they went. They, they bonded out and bought theirs upfront, but there was also a lot more grants and things available that aren't available now. And they're actually, they're actually looking into an agreement like we're doing in a field off to the side, because their solar has been so successful. So, with this program comes a computer, a computer generation here that tells basically what your, what your output is, the conditions, and then I had, this is actually a screenshot from, from Farmington's, but I had to do it in two parts, so there's the other part. But it also tells you the trees, how many light bulbs are powered, how many emissions are saved. There's quite a bit there, and a, and a lot of calculations that can be done by students for engineering or science. I put this in here, this is, Pure Academy, they, they are teaching solar, and they have five panels in their, their plan. They just have a basic, basically a one-kilowatt system, but that's theirs. Now, even if we were to do something like that, that would cost $5,000. And then City of Deer Creek, they've also, they've been doing theirs for, for two years now, and they're actually in the process of doing another solar program. So, everybody that's done it has been very, very happy with the outcome. Now, this is, the company Hawk Energy is one of the people, one of our contractors we're working with, and, and this is just a list of who that they've, they've dealt with, projects that they have. And that list is growing. It's just, a lot of these are recent projects because of the new jobs bill. Any questions, or?
So, thanks, Jeff. This is a really good overview. I, I had the fortune of going into kind of the alternative energy time when we still thought it was like a research project, and is this going to happen? And I think the opportunity of bringing a modern energy system to our schools, so kids can learn about them and understand them as a real-life functioning system, I think is pretty awesome. And Mr. Walter and I kind of, you know, pucked around about this a little bit, you know, and Jeff just kind of ran with it, and it was awesome. So, I'm pretty excited about where you guys have taken it to, and thank you.
I've got a couple compliments and comments, too. Mr. Adler and I are on the building committee, and we have the fortune to work with, with Jeff and his boss, and they've just been a treat to work with. I don't want to short Nick Willis, because he's also a big part of that. But what's happened is, we saw, I saw a little blurb about this, I think it was, each pure or somebody else was doing this, and so, in about a 30-second conversation, I asked Jeff to look into it, and six months later, we've got about $1 million worth of solar going on a couple of our buildings. So, it makes us look real good, but they've done a really good job. We're also working, I think one of the things that excited Dan and I about this was, obviously, the cost savings long run are there, but the fact that you could incorporate solar and have academic possibilities coming out of this, and solar, despite maybe some questions from Washington, solar is going to be some jobs of the future. And for our people, our students, to get an advantage of that while they're in school, I think is just really helpful. So, we're doing it on a couple of fronts. We're saving money, we're saving carbon prints, and we're, and we're giving some education to our kids. So, we're real excited. We're looking at a few other things that, that we've looked at. Jeff and I get going, and we're talking about maybe putting wind turbine engines up at a couple of our schools, and a couple of other things we've looked at. As crazy as that sounds, there's a number of school districts around the country that have done that, and we're taking a look at some possibilities of those things coming. This one was really a blessing, because it was zero cost for us to do that. And so, I'm not sure everyone else will be, but we're looking at some things to try to stay ahead of the, of the utility curve, but it's been a pleasure to work with these gentlemen, and so, that's all I got.
Any other comments? Dr. Karat?
Yep, just in addition to kudos to Mr. Adler and Mr. Walters, I
Yep, just in addition to kudos to Mr. Adlin, Mr. Walters, I see Mr. Myers here. Kudos to Mr. Myers. Mr. Devois, Jeff was in a, in another department actually, and he says, hey, Dr. Karat, we have this young man who's into HVAC and solar and all these things and he's very, very talented. Can we, can you, can we promote him and have him work alongside me as my assistant? So kudos to you, Mr. Myers, also for identifying talent in your department and advocating.
I want to say thank you for supporting me in that. I was real adamant about that position and what comes along with it as far as energy management. So thank you again for supporting.
Thanks Jeff.
No other comments? Okay. Next presentation is on Equal Opportunity Schools. Dr. Tracy Conrad?
Let's ask Mr. Tom Welch to present.
Okay, his name, Mr. Welch is right here with, Welch.
Good evening, Board President Ross, Dr. Karat, members of our Board of Education. Tonight it's my pleasure to introduce to you Dr. Tracy Conrad from Equal Opportunity Schools. Since August, Dr. Conrad has been working with our administrative team and our high school counselors in the identification of underserved groups of students in our advanced placement in international baccalaureate programs. As you know, academic rigor such as the rigor found in our AP and IP programs is predictive of college degree completion. The goal of our partnership with Equal Opportunity Schools is to identify students in underrepresented populations, provide them with the encouragement to enroll in AP and IB and the support to ensure their success. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Conrad.
Hello everyone, do you mind if I, you know, everyone hearing okay? My, my old teaching ways are coming back. I'm a retired high school principal and so I'm used to speaking to the crowd, so if you'll allow me to speak to you. I retired from Hickman High School in Columbia, Missouri as a principal. And during my time there, I actually partnered with Equal Opportunity Schools and we went through this model. And as a result of that, I became so energized and so passionate about this work that instead of retiring to the beach, I retired to work for Equal Opportunity Schools full-time. So why AP, why advanced placement? What I didn't realize, I knew that the students at our schools wanted to go to college, like in your schools as well, over 80% of your students want to go to college. Okay, and what we found out is, can you not hear me? Okay. What we found out is that AP is highly predictive of their success in completing that college degree. As Dr. Karat mentioned earlier, many of the students go to school, but very few students complete the degree program. So when we found out that just attending, just attending an AP class, even if you do not pass the class or pass the test, you increase your chances of graduating from college by 10 to 20 percent. All right? If you take the class and you pass the test, you can increase your chances up to 34 percent. That's amazing. And once we found that out, we said, okay, we need to find the students at our school that want to go to college, make sure that they take at least one AP class before they get there. In other words, you know, learn how to do college while you're in high school. So we go into the schools and we give a survey to every single student and every single faculty member. And out of that, we get information and we combine it with the school's information on test scores, grade point average, and we come up for every student, with every student, a student insight card. What this student tells us is that he wants to go to college. We see he has the scores, he has two teacher recommendations, they tell us what the barriers are. And they also talk about mindsets. We know that test scores and grade point averages are not predictors of success. We now know that having a growth mindset, having grit, determination, those are important factors as well. So we try to get the non-cognitive features of each student and put them into an insight card and give those to the administrators and the counselors and now they can reach out to them. Here's another student from Manuel High School. And I appreciate the students allowing us to put their stuff out there and share this with you, just so you can get an idea of the students that are roaming the school hallways that want to go to college and yet may not know the secret about AP. Okay, so Tyrese is a Manuel student and you can see he has four teacher recommendations. He wants to go to college. Took a couple taps on his shoulder, didn't it? All right? Because a lot of, we got him there, didn't we? A lot of times they don't see themselves as AP students. They think that they are for other students. Okay?
So Dr. Conrad, can you share with them the four apples? That means that four teachers are saying he can, can handle AP.
Correct. As I mentioned, we give the, the teachers each a survey and they have a drop-down box and we ask them to recommend students in their class that they think would be ready for AP classes. And so we're able to then put it on the insight card. And Tyrese has four teacher recommendations. So you have four teachers in his building that thought he could do well at that, at the highest level. Okay, then we have Rika and she's from Richwoods. You can see she has two teacher recommendations. She talks about barriers and we compare their test scores down in the bottom and we compare those to the students that are already in AP classes. So again, these are students who are walking the hallway and now we have all of this information at our fingertips, so we can actually go out and talk to that student and make sure that they are enrolled in a class. Okay, and you can see Tevion here from Peoria High School. He also has four teacher recommendations. These are pretty outstanding students. Okay, and to think that some of them are walking through the halls thinking that they shouldn't be in these advanced classes is really important to identify them. So we started off, and what we look at at Equal Opportunity Schools is that the fact that students enroll in AP classes at different rates. We have at the far left, medium, high-income white and Asian students who tend to enroll at the highest rate regardless of the percentage of the population they make up in the school. Okay, many times the students in this category have parents who are college educated, so they know to push them in those tracks. So Equal Opportunity Schools comes in and says, you know what, we want to make sure that every student and every, every demographic enrolls at the same rate. So you can see from the chart there that we need 22 low-income white and Asian students, 10 low-income Hispanic Latino students, all the way across the board. And we identify those students, we get their student insight cards and we go get them. Okay, you can see that Richwoods made huge gains, okay, and they went up in every category. If we compare side-by-side charts of beginning of this year and those for the beginning of next year, you can see the green bars across the, across the board have increased. And at the end of the day, after all the work, they added 65 underrepresented students, students who don't represent as high a percentage into the classroom, and a net gain of 88 students across all demographics, which is pretty amazing. One of the things that we realized with Richwoods is that they have a strong dual-credit program, given the proximity of where they are to ICC. And as you can see from the chart that we created for them, you can see the numbers of students who are enrolled in AP, IB, a dual-credit, or a combination of the two. So you can see that your high school students are getting really rigorous, getting exposed to really rigorous coursework. Go through the same for Peoria High School. As we looked at the benchmark group, you can see there are only 13 students. So we decided that Peoria High School would have a different goal. We decided that a good goal would be about 35 percent of all students. Okay, which would more than double their enrollment. And as you can see, they did a great job. We're still looking for 41 to reach our goal and we will find them. Again, the green bars, and you can see at the far end, and I'm going through this pretty quickly, but you can see at the far end, the number of students that they've added, they added 80 underrepresented students. Okay, so students from the underrepresented demographics and a net gain of 78 students. Again, you can see the combination of the dual enrollment. Manuel High School, they're kind of the stars here, Heather. So you can see that when Manuel started out, they didn't have as many courses to offer. They only had 25 underrepresented students and only 27 total students in the program. So again, we had a different goal. We put it at 35 and look at that, only missing six students. I think we found them, didn't we? Okay, so you can see that she went from having 27 Manuel and their team went from having 27 students in the fall to having 96 students enrolled in AP classes for the following fall. And according to Dr. Karat, that rounds up to about four times as many students. It's really 3.7, but.
Spence County.
So again, 70 underrepresented students were added to AP and then a net gain of 69 students, which is really, really impressive. And then a chart to show the number of students in each category that are in the dual enrollment in AP. So the grand totals for your schools, which I'm proud to say, the number of underrepresented students added over last year was 215. Okay? And then the, the net gain of students across all categories, you added 235 students to AP. So I'd like for you guys to give yourself a round of applause.
Thank you Tracy, this is obviously very exciting and very rewarding work. I want to recognize, Heather, please stand and I think Brett is with us tonight as well. Where's Brett? There's Brett. Is Dr. Coleman here or any high school counselors? Okay, thank you for your efforts and thank you for motivating students, identifying students and working so well with Dr. Conrad and Dr. Conrad, we want to publicly thank you as well.
Can you share the process quickly because I, I love that process where the principal, counselors, met with kids.
Right, and they dedicated much of their first semester, bringing students in, sit with the counselors and the principal, not just the counselor and the principal, and having the phone ready to talk to mom and dad as well. And sometimes it took, you know, just one meeting and then they're left with questions and they followed up. So this is, this has been a lot of work over the course of the entire school year up to this point.
Personalized attention.
Exactly. It's not a, it's not a note, it's not an announcement on, the daily announcements, it's, it's sitting with students and encouraging them and working with teachers as well on growth mindset in terms of the, the teachers being their, their coach, the fact that their success in the classroom is dependent on the student's success as well. So it's been very exciting.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions from, or comments from the board?
Do you want to go?
No, go. Dr. Bob?
Hi, thanks for that informative and detailed presentation. As you know by now, I'm a, I'm a members of data kind of guy. And what I really like to see is what you guys put up there. I'm always asking the question, what is it, what's in it for us? And I like to see, to identify actual numbers. We started out with this many students, this is how many we've got, this is where we're going. And so the question I have is the, is the natural follow-up to that. What's in place to track these kids and to see what happens to them four or five years down the road?
Thank you for that question. As part of the partnership, we're switching over now to the support aspect. So we have teams at each of the schools and we're developing support plans for every student as well as support plans for the teachers in case they need some professional development. And then as a part of continuing services, services with us, we tracked, we tracked the students throughout the rest of their trajectory and it adds to our data.
Yep, and Dr. Conrad, the next presentation is tied into your presentation regarding the credits and master schedule and a period which we're going to call like an AP lab so that students can have time within the day to work together and get additional support. And Mrs. Sanchilip and Dr. Simpson will touch on that briefly.
And right, one of the, one of the areas of support and one of the needs that was revealed through the data process and the survey process was that students have a lot of things going on outside of school. And so finding time within the school day to be able to get additional support, access to their teachers, access to writing labs, was a very critical piece of encouraging students to, to take an AP class. And quite frankly, it replicates what they see at the college level.
Mr. Walter?
Yeah, I just had a, what, what's the cost of this program?
Well, right now we're working with the entire state of Illinois, they're the first statewide cohort. And so we have grant money from the Rakes Foundation, Google, we're partnering with the White House and its Lead Hire Initiative and my brother's keeper. So this initial year was offset by half by grants. I think that the next year, I don't want to quote this incorrectly, next year there are a couple of different options. One, you can go with just the tactical, which is keeping the survey and it doesn't have a partnership director attached to it. And I believe that its cost is 16,000.
Yeah, so I received an email before school started and they wanted just to target Richwoods for 25. And I said, well, we have two other high schools that we're, that I'm interested in and, and that needs that support and that attention. So we sort of negotiated and ended up doing three for 50, but we received support from Caterpillar to, to provide, you know, to assist with the fee. And so we'll recognize them in April and so we're kind of ahead, yeah. So CAT is actually providing support for this initiative.
Right, so that was kind of a long-winded answer to say that there are a variety of funding sources and that the next, another option next year is to have what we call comprehensive services where you would have someone like me partner with the schools again, and that's for an additional cost. But we're in negotiations, I think I should, I can safely say.
No, it's quite all right, I'm like, Dr. Bob, kind of a data person too, and I've been impressed with the numbers. We just like to see, have you got some other places where there's been some long-range things that you've done this for 10 years or more that shows us data?
We're, we're a fairly young organization, it started back in 2011. And so we're in the sixth year, but we have a lot of schools that, and data on our website at Equal Opportunity Schools, but we've had school districts where they've closed their gap and that's, that's our goal. And less than 1% of the schools in the nation actually have equal access to their AP programs. And so that's our goal in every school. And so we have many districts that stay with us year after year after year because they experience success in, in the first place. So we do have some trend data, but again, it's, you know, a fairly young organization.
I thank you, because one of the goals I think this board has had is we want to increase dual-credit and AP. And we are heading in that direction, so you're, this fits pretty well, I think, with where we're looking to go. So thank you.
The information from the surveys from Equal Opportunity Schools, we identified some students specifically for dual-credit. So when they were approached by their principal and their counselor, that was always an option.
Just a, but I didn't hear a number, if I may. How much does it cost?
50, 50 grand.
50, 50,000 per year?
For three schools.
For three schools, per year?
And we got offset with some money, we got some help.
No, I'm just, I just want to know, and is that likely to remain the same? I know there's other funding sources that you mentioned, or will it increase over time?
In the time that I've been with the company, it's, it's remained relatively stable. They add, I guess you would say a cost of living increase sort of thing, like a maybe a 2% raise, but for the most part, you know, we're nonprofit. Our goal is to get in and to help schools. And again, for the following year is different than the first year. And I believe to have tactical services is 16,000 per school. And then if you add the comprehensive services, I think it bumps up to 25. But as Dr. Karat mentioned, she's negotiating, trying to get some, you know, moving in deal and I have to say.
Yeah, watch out. She's really good at it.
Hey Susan, is it 25 or, where's Susan?
I'm right here.
Yeah. Cause you were, you were working with me.
Yeah, we had 25,000 through Caterpillar and then we took the other 25,000 through Title One.
I just have a quick question. How often, I mean, I know you've done, you know, identified these students, what kind of process is that? And you don't just identify them once. Is it like an ongoing identification?
What we do, yes ma'am, we come in in August and we give everyone the survey and then it takes about, it took us about two weeks to get the survey done, we got all the material back. And then starting in September, we started looking at the, what's called the Equity Pathways Report. It has all of the information from all of the teachers, the students, they identify supports, they identify needs, it's fairly comprehensive support plan. And then we come in and start coming up with a plan. And so that's where I, I attended each of the schools, we met with the teams, we talked about what's the best plan for each particular school. As you notice, we had different goals for each school. And then we came up with a, a way that we were going to do that. So we had an outreach and advocacy plan, we identified the students, we had some assemblies, we decided who was going to talk to the students for the first time, who was going to talk to second and the third. to talk to second and the third, because many of the students really needed a lot more encouragement than other students did. So, we really ended up, and we're still talking to students, and the numbers aren't complete. So, I've been very pleased with the partnership. Adding 235 students across three high schools, I think is very impressive and I applaud your district for their commitment to do so. But keeping in mind that this is just one piece of a bigger picture and that when you get more students taking rigorous classes, things like test scores tend to go up, things like ACT scores tend to go up. And so, it has a sort of a collateral or residual effect across the entire program.
Yes, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
So, now, we talk to Dr. Simpson and Mrs. San Philip regarding graduation requirement updates.
And they need no introduction.
Right. Dr. Karat said you need no introduction, right?
No. Dr. Karat mentioned the attendance initiative earlier this evening. That started in October of last year. In January of last year, Dr. Karat asked us if we could look at graduation rates. Well, it was a natural, it came out of the attendance committee very naturally. As we look at data, obviously, we saw absences from some of our high school students. We saw chronic truancy and we saw kids dropping out of school. So, we looked at the graduation rate in 2010 and it was 90%. And in 2016, the graduation rate was under 70%. So, Dr. Karat asked if an offshoot of the attendance committee could be a graduation committee. And we could look at basically why the graduation rate had decreased and what was happening. Our strategic plan, and first of all, the vision of our school, of our district, is we take pride in educating and graduating each student prepared and inspired to contribute to the world. And as you know, you've heard about alignment peoria. An alignment peoria is aligned with a strategic plan. So, one of the outcomes is to increase graduation rate and the other outcome is to increase career and college readiness. Well, as we started this committee in January of 2016, over a year ago, several people from the attendance committee, and three of the main people are here right now, won both, Beth Kreider, Brett Elliott, and Derek Booth. And I have to say that they were really three of the pillars of this graduation committee. I don't know what I would do without being able to bounce about everything off of Derek Booth. He has been really a sense of reason, a sense of common sense, and he has such a great feel for kids. Beth Kreider has truly helped us with research, the State Board, and everything she brings to the table. And she has just been such a resource for us. Mr. Elliott has really helped us push the envelope. This committee was challenging. I think that's a good word. Because we started at one place, looking at, just looking at why graduation rates have declined. You know, we went for, we looked at graduation credits. We started there. Well, as we started this, and I can't forget Chris Copeland because Chris is our other right hand in this, and he truly has been there the entire way, doing a lot of the research and making a lot of the contacts. And as Mr. Elliott, his, you know, he kind of did a 360 from where we started on this committee to where we ended up. A lot, it was great because we had discussions that were open and honest discussions. And we looked at data all the way through, not only data of our district, but what other districts were doing in the state of Illinois and the philosophy of colleges and how colleges are looking at high school graduation and what is associated with it. When we, we kept expanding the committee to make sure that we had representation from all three of our high schools, all three of our principals. I see, I know Mrs. Young is here tonight. All three of our principals were here. We had counselors from, well, Mr. Booth represented manual. We had counselors from the other two high schools. We had teachers and some retired one fifth public schools counselor and principal, as well as Dr. Ali from ICC, who brought a terrific perspective to our conversations. We started at one place and we ended up with a comprehensive white paper that addresses our philosophy, because we had to stop and develop a philosophy. And it's the Peoria Public Schools wants to provide each individual student with the education and career options that will allow them to graduate and pursue their future endeavors without the pressure of performing relative to their peers. And this will be achieved by offering educational and career options according to each student's interests, rigorous educational experiences, providing interventions, reducing graduation credits, and providing flexibility in scheduling and awarding credits. And we struggled with some things that you'll hear from Dr. Simpson and probably from Mr. Copeland. We struggled with some things. The way the student's schedule was set up, and it goes to what Dr. Conrad just talked about, we, our students needed support. We want students in the most rigorous classes possible. We want students to take risks. We want students to have the support necessary. And so, we talked about, and I'm going to use this in quotes, reinstituting what used to be called a study hall for some kind of support and opportunity, not only for struggling students, but for students in AP classes, for students in IB classes. We needed to look at how we structured a school day and were we offering kids the opportunity for internships? Were we offering kids the opportunity to explore their love of the fine arts? Were we offering kids opportunities to try classes that may lead to future careers? And our answer was, in a lot of cases, no. So, you're going to see three recommendations. And these recommendations came out of great discussions, a lot of research, and pretty much 100% of our group, and we met a lot, came to the realization that what we have in this white paper, these recommendations, are the very best recommendations to give the students of Peoria Public Schools the very best opportunities for their future in career and college readiness and increasing the graduation rate and increasing rigor. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Simpson, who is going to talk about these three recommendations.
Good evening. I'm going to give you just a high-level view of what's in the white paper. Each of you has a copy of the white paper. There are basically three recommendations coming from the graduation committee. And I'll tell you what the recommendation is and give you some reasoning behind the recommendation. The first one regarding class rank. Class rank, the recommendation would be replaced with a new academic recognition distinction beginning with the class of 2020, which is basically this year's freshman in all subsequent classes. Validatorian, slatorian distinction would be replaced by the Latin system of recognition, cum laude, magna cum laude, and summa cum laude. In your packets are a list of the schools that have, no longer have class rank. Here's some interesting general facts about class rank that we really picked up from our discussions with the counselors, principals. Class rank creates unnecessary stress for students and parents and does not always allow students to follow their own personal aspirations in terms of regarding what they want to do when they get out of school. High school students frequently ask for their rank, they're fixated on weighted classwork, and manipulate their schedules to gain advantage over peers. And the big finding that we found is during the research is that colleges and universities increasingly rely less on class rank than ever before and more on test scores, grades, and rigorous courses. We surveyed local universities, Bradley, ISU, ICC, Mid-State, and none of them really use class rank as a criteria for admission. This is just a graph showing you some, the test scores, grades, class rank, essays, and interest. And you can see, class rank is the third line and you can see how it has gone down over time. And this isn't really new data, so probably if we had an updated graph, it would be even lower. The National Association of College Admissions Counseling reported that over half of high schools no longer report student ranking. The proposed new levels of recognition, we would continue with Australian Merit Scholars. That has been a recognition point in the Peoria Public Schools for a long, long time. Basically, the Australian Merit Scholars represents the top 8% of the school. So, that would continue to recognize exemplary academic performances, students at each of those schools. We would use for cum laude, which would mean with honors, would be grant for students with grade point averages between 4.25 and 4.49. The magna cum laude, with great honors, would be for students' grade point averages is 4.5 to 4.74. And summa cum laude, with the highest honor, would be grant for students with grade point averages of 4.75 and higher. So, these ranges, there's about a 25-point difference between each of those. They would run across the whole district. And then, students would be recognized with colored cords during graduation ceremonies who earned these honors. One note is with the Latin system, and this fits very nicely with the presentation of equal opportunity schools, with the system, there will need to be assurance that each of the high schools offers enough enriched advanced placement dual credit courses to enable students to take in order to achieve these recognition honors. Next slide, please. The proposed recognition plan for the juniors and seniors, I mean sophomores and juniors this year would be the class of 2018, 19. You would continue with valedictorian, slatorian named and class rank. Beginning with the class of 2020, which are this current freshman class, would go to the cum laude, magna cum laude, summa cum laude recognition system. Next slide. Recommendation number two regarding graduation credits. And this was really probably the first thing we really tackled in the committee. The recommendation is to change the number of required credits from 26 to 24, which doesn't seem like a lot, but that would still give you a range for some students who want to get more credits between 24 and 28 credits that they could earn during the four years of high schools. What this means, though, is it would provide students with an extra period in a seven-period day for tutoring, enrichment opportunities, interventions, electives, and/or internships. And the note at the bottom is the number of graduation credits required for graduation was increased from 22 to 26 in 2011. And with the seven-period day, as Mrs. San Philip mentioned, students no longer had the opportunity for a study hall, nor did the staff have the flexibility to provide interventions. So, this drop in two credits would provide each student with at least one period a day for interventions of some sort, whether it's AP interventions or for some of, for internships, whatever. Okay, next slide. This is a list of area schools and some of the larger comparable schools. We tried to find out how many credits each of these schools required for graduation and what their daily periods were, whether it was a six, seven, or eight. So, as you can see, Dunlap requires 21, Morton 20, Washington 22.5, Pekin 20, East Pure 22, Limestone 23.5. Down at the bottom, some of the larger schools, Rockford 24, Springfield 26. So, 26 is really kind of on the higher end if you look at all the local schools. And in your white paper is also listed, a list of the state requirements for graduation. And if you add up the state requirements, it comes to about 14 credits. But the state allows districts to add additional credits required for graduation depending on the community. Like some schools, the state may require two years of science. A district can decide to require three years of science or four years of math instead of three years of math. So, districts have some flexibility in terms of doing that. The third recommendation is regarding flexibility. And basically, the recommendation is provide flexibility in providing educational and career options for all students. And just some examples of flexibility that we talked about, flex scheduling, stagger start times, early graduation, career pathways, PE waivers, advanced placement opportunity labs, continuum or menu of interventions, freshman seminar, tutoring, schools within a school, increased rigor, allocation of staff and resources, opportunities with connections to support, transitional experiences, and competency-based education. So, those would be just some examples that we would like to see some flexibility provided for the students. Again, three recommendations in terms of replacing class rank with the Latin system, changing the number of graduation credits from 26 to 24, and providing more flexibility to provide more opportunities and career options for all students. And we really feel that these recommendations will increase high school graduation rates. It's interesting, if you look at, what really struck me was when the number of credits was changed from 22 to 26, that's also when the graduation rate went from 90% to 69%. So, there, I don't know whether there's a real correlation there, but it looks like there might be. Okay? Chris has been doing some great job kind of figuring out a communication plan for this. So, Chris, you want to talk about that a little bit?
Sure, thank you. So, as Mrs. San Philip mentioned, it took us quite a while to get here. For those of us that started on the committee, we've been meeting for about a year and a half, a little more than that. And so, we felt like we were getting very close at the end of the first semester as we prepared our back-to-school, or our welcome to high school books for our incoming freshmen. And so, we made sure to include a note in there to be looking And so we made sure to include a note in there to be looking, we were anticipating the proposal, and I'm glad to say we met that timeline because we said we'd be bringing this in March, and we caught it in the nick of time. So we gave our incoming freshmen a heads up as well as all of our students because they all received that Welcome to High School book to register for the courses, that we were looking at the course, at the graduation credit requirements. We also presented initially this presentation to our PTO council on February 27th and got some feedback from them. And what we asked of them is to make their upcoming PTO meetings a transition meeting with their incoming junior, middle school students, their seventh and eighth, current seventh and eighth graders in their feeder areas, invite them. And so we sent out a letter on Friday just letting them know that we were making this presentation to the board tonight. And so that letter went to all current seventh, eighth, and ninth graders on Friday, that should receive that on Friday or Saturday in the mail, and invited them to one of the three of these PTO meetings over the next couple of weeks. So we'll be presenting the same presentation to our PTOs at our high schools with the middle school students and their families invited. As Dr. Simpson mentioned, this is to start with the class of 2020. So we invited the seventh, eighth, and ninth grade students this year specifically to this meeting to learn more since it impacts them, and we'll get their feedback, have discussions with them, and our hope is to bring it back to you at the April 3rd board meeting for approval.
Really? Okay.
Do you want to cut?
Sure, happy summer.
When are you guys going to do something that's not sterling and excellent? This is just the sort of over-the-top I've come to expect from all you folks, and I really do appreciate it. I know that a lot of folks have, you put a lot of time and work and thought into this and a lot of critical thought, and for that I am grateful. Regarding the flexibility and the idea that this would give us perhaps, if I'm correct, a one-period a day, I just want, and you know where I'm headed with this, I'm sure, is to make sure that those flexibility options are really taken seriously and that we don't create a one-period holding tank, which, you know, it's almost, it's like falling over, you know, that you don't want that to happen. And I know you won't, and frankly, to have that extra period a day, I'm already thinking about stuff that we've been talking about, where that will fit into some plans that we're thinking about in the future. When I went to college, I went to college with a couple of friends, and actually, my sister was right behind me. I'm very proud to tell you that she graduated from Harvard magna cum laude, and my best friend graduated from college summa cum laude. I graduated, thank you, laude.
Which one was that?
Thank you, laude.
I'm going to address the holding tank comment because that was a huge part of our discussion, wasn't it, Mr. Elliott? When we first brought up this idea of taking what used to be known as a study hall and recreating it into an opportunity hour, an intervention hour, an APIB hour, there was much discussion that we never want to see the old study halls again. We never want to see a holding tank or just a wasted hour for students. And our group has been adamant about that from the very beginning, that this time has to be used as enrichment, intervention, an opportunity to learn more about a certain career through an internship, but definitely not a holding tank. And so we appreciate that comment because we had a lot of discussion, and Mr. Elliott led that discussion.
Well, and thanks very much, and I meant no offense. It was, as I said, there's
That's a good comment, yeah.
And quite frankly, the idea that there might be one time during the day, not just at the high school, but at our primary and middle schools, where we might have a chance to engage in the kinds of things that you're talking about, so that there might be an overall effect starting from the early years onward. So kudos to you guys. Thank you very much.
This is just high school to begin with. This is just high school to begin with.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, okay.
You don't mean
Yeah, I like it. Thank you.
Just so you know, Beth Derry and Beth Crowder are the same people. It's the same person. Program Committee update. Mr. Willis, you're on.
Carla Eman. Carla is, Josh will be making our Program Committee update report tonight.
Make sure our microphone is working tonight. I'm Carla Eman, and I'm here with Josh Collins and McWillis to give you the Program Committee update for this evening. Can you help by being the driver? So our agenda tonight is a real quick overview, and then we will give you the transportation fund recommendations and the education fund recommendations. And then following, we do have supporting data slides. It will be up to you after hearing the recommendations if you'd like us to go and give an overview of all the supporting data slides, or if you would rather just drive us to the direction of which slide you want to hear a little bit more about, we can do it that way as well in the interest of time. We must remember, the purpose of the committee was to adopt a balanced budget, and that means that income covers all expenses that supports the district strategic plan, pillar five, target number one. We showed this slide the last time we had this discussion. It's important to note that we are looking at a $4.3 million deficit. In past years, this is our fourth year with Program Committee, we always started with the education fund and then tried to work our way down. When McWillis came on board, we kind of started at the bottom. We know we can do a levy for the IMRF Social Security, so we moved to transportation this year as the first area to tackle. And then we had a discussion on O and M, landed on education fund again. We'll be prepared to update you on O and M the second meeting of April, but tonight, as I said, we'll be focusing on the education fund and the transportation fund. The goal for the transportation discussion was to balance the transportation fund and minimize the service impact to students. We still want to be able to bus the same students that we are now, we just need to make some changes. So we went with make operational changes that are needed to eliminate the 1.4 million, but also be able to maintain a level of service. That comes out to $105 per student for the whole year. So the transportation recommendations. We recommend that we implement a three-tiered bell schedule, which means that you're changing the time, schedule start times. That would save $1,084,000. And we would work towards eliminating the charter buses that we need to turn to because of lack of buses and drivers for the after-school programs. We would need to align the high school schedules. That means between the three high schools, they need to have identical schedules to implement an efficient midday Woodruff run for our Woodruff Career Technical Programs. That would save $100,000. And Josh explained the pursuing the stop-arm program in detail at our last meeting, and that would bring in $250,000 for the first year. We also want to shift the school lunch deliveries to the food service department. That's a savings of $100,000 because of the difference in the salary levels of the staff that are involved, and it puts it back into the department it should be. Implement a voluntary rider opt-out FY18 that saves $1.98 per mile. Again, what we're talking about then is when you register your child, at that time, you have the opportunity to mark a box that you do not need transportation for the year. There are many of our students that do not need transportation. That would take miles off of any route that Josh is needing to set up each year. And then reduce mileage on program loans by 5% in order to ensure the above savings. That comes to $1,534,000. Where we're at on that right now, we currently have surveys out, and I'm not sure the exact date, they're closing soon. And so we are getting community and parent and teacher input on that. But the sooner we can get started with these recommendations, the better. Every year, we lose that $1,400,000. So every year you wait, you're losing that money, money that we need to replace buses that have some rust issues, and we need to be able to move forward as soon as we possibly can for implementation. Then for the education fund, those recommendations, that we are looking for a decision tonight, unlike the transportation, that we are proposing that we would have that decision in May. For this, it's align all primary PLCs, those are professional learning communities, to twice per week for the primary level, and then for middle schools to the three times per week, and that coincides with the intent of the fine arts programming scheduling. That would save $335,583. We currently have schools that are doing more than those targeted amounts. What it does is it just brings them all in line so they're all doing the same thing. Then we would want to form a committee to re-envision PLC time for high schools in the core areas that are currently using PLC times, which are English, math, social studies, and science. During the 17, 18-year, we would study this further and see if there is a way that we can move it outside the school day, which could save upwards of $500,000. But at this time, it would be a committee to re-envision this. Next is to non-renew the IB program in the primary and middle schools for a savings of $338,073. What we're looking at there is that we could continue doing many of the same types of programs. All of the teachers have been trained, it's been in place for several years now. Next would be to reduce the budget allocation for Paxton programs. That's kind of our career pathways for the middle school level by one-third. We're looking at probably reducing fifth, sixth grade there and continuing to push the seventh, eighth graders. And by doing this, that would save $173,452. We would proceed with department cuts, those are more central administration, although it does include technology, research, and, you know, HR and other areas. And that would save $199,000. And then we would proceed with the other program area cuts as recommended in our overall slides that you have in front of you, and that would come to $470,818 for our targeted savings of 1.5 million. If you had any questions, or if you want me to proceed with any of the other slides or all of them, just let me know at this time what the general feel is, if there's particular questions first. I can just continue.
Yeah, if you could go back on the transportation slide, the three-tier.
Probably want to go to the slide. Do you want to go through what the rules were to, or just the recommendation? Just go back to the recommendation, okay.
Okay. When you said you got the time scheduled to be announced, there has been some speculation as to those time schedules. And your assumption is that the reduction, the reduction in this is going to save the, let's see, 140, 144,000. Are there any other alternatives that you can do to this? I know this is going to have the biggest impact. Is there a possible two-tier schedule that would save some money, but maybe not this much money?
No, there's not, because it's how you utilize the buses.
No.
I'm Josh. He's the expert.
Yeah, if you want to maybe show.
Basically, on a, again, what we're looking at is we want to try to run it as efficiently as possible without removing students from eligibility for transportation is what we're trying to do. The, if we try to implement a two-tier system and we say we want to cut 26 buses, well, each bus on a two-tier system, given the fact we have 27 schools, you're looking at eliminating two routes per school. How do we do that? Do we make the, you know, run longer routes to do that? How do we achieve a reduction of two per school, but yet still maintain the same level of service is what we're really looking at? Three-tier gives us the ability for each one of those buses to run, to run three schools instead of two, and what that does is that spreads that out over a fewer number of buses. So we have fewer number of buses on the road, but we're still offering transport to roughly the same number of students, and that's really what we were looking at. Any other way that we look at it, what we start ending up with is taking kids off buses.
And so how many buses? That would be what, 26 buses, that's 40 grand per bus, 40,000?
Yeah.
For bus, with the three-tiered recommendation?
Correct. We're looking right now with what we've done with, in the subcommittee, with some of the modeling and moving things around, I think we've got it down to about 91 routes. Again, that's being calculated off of this year's data, about 91 routes, and we're currently running 117, so.
I have one other favor. If you can go back to the overall budget thing, we had all four of the divisions in. Thank you. The, your overall goal is to try to get that whole $4 million in balance, is that correct?
At least that, because we need to have positive
Right. And I know our board members know it, but for the community, to take money out, you can balance the ed funds, you can't take money out of transportation to put in the ed fund, these are all four buckets, separate buckets. But our goal is to try to do the total of $4 million. And I'm not trying to be facetious here, but the three-tier route that you have, on paper and stuff works, is a practical implication for families, is going to have a huge impact. To give you a scenario of that. I went through some of these budget analysis in a previous life, and, you know, with education, I could also, we could make some cuts in education. If we increase class size to 35 kids per class, you can balance it on the education side, too, by doing that. Is that a practical method? I don't think so. And so I think we're going to have to be, as a board, weighing the impact of what three-tier does to the people who've had impacts. We've got a lot of people that this is going to impact. I appreciate what you're doing, it's not an easy job. I mean, we've asked, we've asked you to come up with these numbers, so, you know, you guys are the messenger and stuff with it. So I just want to say, we're not taking any shots at you for this because we said, come up with a method for us to get a balanced budget, and so you are. But then that's for us, then, to decide what's the best way to make that work. And so I just have some questions for you on that.
Mr. Walter, if I, I'm sorry, will you?
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
If I can follow on that. If email had a bell, mine would be ringing off the hook. And I've heard from a great many families on this. If I can follow up on Mr. Walter, if we're looking at, if we take a step back, I understand what you've done, but if we take a step back and we're looking at saving 1.4 million somewhere, must it come out of this fund? Or can we find 1.4 million somewhere else? That's the first piece. The second piece is, I noticed that you've got a couple of options, including one that does not include the three-tier system, and here's the feedback I'm getting, and here's my concern, is there's some very real people with some very real families and some very real children with some very real hardships. And that, that we are very cautious about our social justice stance here in the district. And it's, I am wondering that if we narrow our focus to the fiscal piece of this that we want to look at, without taking a step back and saying, okay, I think I can get 1.4 million over here, then we lose sight of the fact that, what are you going to tell families who have one child in each level who are going to be disproportionately affected by this? What are you going to tell families who are similar, as a matter of fact, are you certain that this will not disproportionately negatively affect low-income families or families in 61605, or families with a single income, or persons who are working to make just above minimum wage and they're working two jobs to do it?
Four.
Thank you. These are very real issues that need to be addressed, and as I said, I'm looking at your option B. And as I said, I'm looking at your option B. And if we can find someplace else to cover the deficit, we've still got half a million bucks that might come our direction. And if we can find someplace else in terms of, and I don't know what's coming down the road in terms of teacher retirements, et cetera, and how much money we may be saving along those lines, and the estimates for that, we know that there's been some discussions about that. That's, those are some real issues. And I'm strongly advise all of us to look at this very, very carefully and to make sure that we know if we follow a policy decision, that there won't be unintended consequences down the road, as might have happened with other policy decisions that weren't popular from this board. In addition to that, the idea of professional learning communities, and as I heard, I think I heard you under, if I understood you, looking at moving those into high school outside the school day. My email bell was ringing also from messages from teachers. So here's the thing, we just had a presentation on equitable schools and AP. And if you reduce PLCs, would you not, particularly if you move them outside the school day for high schools, if you change that, would you not then be impacted directly or indirectly those students who might be advised to take advantage of these and to have their teachers trained and take this opportunity to implement that program? And point of fact, in middle schools and elementary schools, changing those times, we don't have AP in elementary and middle schools. But if we have an opportunity for teachers to do the work that they're very good at doing, then maybe that what's happening with the high schools can be supported in that regard through PLCs. I've got more to say, but I think I'll stop now.
Dr. Karat, did you have anything? Were you going to say something? Anyone else have anything?
Well, I just wanted to say, as a district, we cannot continue to spend what we don't have. You heard from the very beginning, the onset of this presentation, that the goal is to balance the budget. That's what we are charged with, we were charged and are charged with doing. We do have a deficit, and it would be irresponsible as a, as a staff to not share this million-dollar reduction finding, which is via the transportation route. As Mrs. Eamon and Josh mentioned during their presentation, this committee has been ongoing for four years, since twenty fourteen, fifteen, we're twelve million, we were twelve million in the hole. And we've chipped out, away at it, chipped away at it, chipped away at it, chipped away at it, specifically targeting the ed fund. And, and so this revelation in terms of, hey, look at, you can still save a million dollars by not impacting services, but just restructuring, and thus the idea of the three-tier system. So we have this opportunity right here, but then on the other, and so we've pretty much done what we have to do in saying, hey, here's an opportunity. So on the other hand, the question is, are we willing, you know, our families, are we willing and able to make the sacrifices that are necessary to, to make this thing happen? So I guess my recommendation, really just like PLCs, is to kick the can down, you know, sorry Carla, but kick the can down the road for another year and set up a committee and engage a variety of individuals. And we do, Mr. Willis, is monitoring the surveys, and it's really interesting. I feel really good, really, about where we are. We're engaging quite a bit of stakeholders, and we're getting a variety of feedback, not only yes, no, but even some verbal feedback. And over the last time I checked, over twenty-five hundred, two thousand five hundred people have provided feedback around this, this initiative. So the idea is to target some key stakeholders and say, hey, you know, let's put something together and, and, and make something, you know, let's, let's make this work, and you guys build it. So anyway, that's.
Sorry to interrupt, but could you talk a little bit about the number of surveys that, this is not just, we're not in a vacuum on this, there's a number of surveys that have been done, and it's been out there, and it's still ongoing.
Right. And so what I'll do is throw the ball over to Mr. Willis, because he's been manning that piece.
We've had about twenty-five hundred fifty surveys. The surveys have been out about a week, a little bit over. I suspect before it's done, we'll have over the next week, pretty close to three thousand surveys. And our intent was to get feedback. And we are receiving feedback. We are looking at a lot of the comments. Last time I checked, I think there were over twelve or thirteen hundred remarks that people actually went in and individually made, in addition to completing the questions that, the eight or nine questions that we put together for that survey. And so our intent is to go through all of that information, to digest and, and reflect upon our proposed recommendation, reflect on it against that information, and put together the best recommendation that we can to you to address pillar five, which, which says we're going to balance the budget. One of the questions was, do we really need to hit the transportation fund? And my response to that would be, you treat, my opinion is that you treat the problems where those problems are generated. We have a four-point-three million dollar deficit. The education fund contributes one point one million to that, based on the current budget. Operations and maintenance fund contributes one point five million to that, based upon the current budget, and transportation, one point four million, based upon the current budget. I, I think it would, and those kinds of deficits have occurred over years. So there's not been a deficit in transportation for just one year. It's been somewhere around there for a number of years. What that says is that the, the spending problem is structural, and you have to address structure if you have a structural spending problem. That's what we're trying to do. Education fund, operations fund, transportation fund, those deficits have pretty much come in at that level for a number of years. What we have to do to be responsible is look at what's causing those structural deficits and align our operations so that doesn't occur. I think about, an analogy is dieting. You can fast and lose a percent, two percent of your body weight. But if you're trying to downsize by twenty to twenty-five percent, it takes an adjustment on activity, it takes an adjustment on dieting, it takes lifestyle changes, it takes behavioral change. Our deficit of four-point-four million dollars is not fasting. It's, it's a true, authentic, try to reduce your body weight by twenty-five percent diet. And so we have to look at behavior, and we have to look at structure, and we have to look at what, in a major way, needs to be different in order for us to, to address our strategic plan goal, and ultimately provide the best services we can to students. That's where we're trying to go. So.
Mr. Adler? Thank you. Yeah, I, I mean, I would echo a lot of the sentiments that already have been shared. Certainly, the, some of the strongest feedback we've heard on any number of issues in the last two years has been about this three-tiered bell proposal. I guess I would, I would just make a contextual comment that, you know, we are an urban school district in the least equitably funded state in the entire nation. So getting down to where we're at in terms of making, pulling levers that, that could potentially zero our deficits, there are not a single one of them that looks attractive or, you know, easy to look at. And so I, you know, in alignment with Dr. Karat's comments, I, you know, I certainly echo further dialogue on, you know, is this proposal something that we can make work with our parents and our families, or are there alternatives that we can, can pursue that maybe achieve at least a portion of the objectives that we kind of set out for the committee? I think as board members, it's important that we kind of, that we, we listen, sometimes with both ears open if can, but also, you know, remember some of the other goals that we've put out there. You know, I, I know staff worked very hard on these recommendations, and, and there's not a lot of fun in it. But every time we come back to the table and talk about things that we want to do to invest, to give our kids more support, we look at the hole that we still have to fill. So I, I think we just need to be cognizant of that and, and continue to listen and, and collaborate. So, yeah.
Ms. Jackson?
I totally agree with, with Board Member Adler. I, I'm sitting here looking at all the numbers, and we all know what we have to do. And unfortunately, and one of the things that I always fall back on is, the state of Illinois has not been kind to our school district. And we want our kids to have all the things they need to succeed. And it takes all of those things for, for them to succeed. We just have to work hard at trying to figure out, how do we balance this budget? And I don't want to balance it on the back of our children. But how do we balance this budget and keep it so that everybody gets what they need from this district? And I'm always in a quandary of saying, you know, what is it that we can do? How do we do it? And it's going to take everybody, and there's a lot going to be done that people are not going to be happy with. There's a lot done that I'm certainly not happy with. But if we want to pull this together, balance this budget, I remember when that deficit was sixteen million dollars. And we're down to four-point-four. But we still have to balance it. And I, I want to work on this, keep talking about it, how do we do this? We can't talk forever, that's absolutely for sure. So that it doesn't affect our children, expressly our children that really need it. So it's just going to mean that we're just going to have to hassle with it, make some decisions that we probably aren't going to be pleased with, and certainly our constituency is not going to be pleased with. But we're going to have to figure it out as a board.
Okay, thank you. I think over, over the years, we have, we have really, we as a school district, and I can, I can speak intelligently on this, because I've been on this board for more than fifteen, fourteen years. We started out trying to make sure that we do what we can do for our students and parents. I came from Memphis, Tennessee, and they don't provide public school transportation, you know? And so there are a lot of school districts that do not provide public school transportation. And, you know, the, this is, this is the responsibility of the parents in some cases, but we have, we have this district gone over and above, and even somewhere I mentioned, six-one, six-oh-five, I've represented six-one, six-oh-five, because that's where I live, and that's the first district. And many of the grants and funding that we've gotten is because of the poverty levels and because of six-one, six-oh-five, not just for the school district, but for the city of Peoria and everybody else that wants to look at the statistics of six-one, six-oh-five. But my point is, you know, we've, we've done the bell schedule before. Before, it wasn't enough time between the three, three bell schedules before. We've tried everything. But we, I think that we, we've done well to provide what we've provided for parents and students. But I really would like to see, I'm glad that all the surveys are coming in, I really would like to see parents, parents get involved more and help us solve this problem so that we can provide a quality education. Can't always rely on, you know, we're poor and we're this. Nobody could have been poorer than I was growing up in the cotton field since I was six years old. But I'm saying, at some point, we have to take responsibility and say, okay, how can we be a partner in this? Otherwise, we all lose. The school district, I mean, we can't provide education because we're trying to provide transportation. But I think, I, I have to say that they, the transportation has really given this a lot of thought and tried to keep everybody informed. In six-one, six-oh-five, we have provided transportation for students that were not even supposed to get transportation, because that, you know, because it was less than a mile and a half, but because of the need, and we were able to do that at that point, because transportation was one of the budgets that was really advanced. It was in the, in the, it was in the black for a number of years, so we could do that.
And we're still doing that for some routes.
We can't, yeah, we're still doing that, because if it's less than a mile and a half, we do not have to provide transportation. But the truth is, in best of that, we really, I mean, it's not required to have transportation, but there are some rules around it in the state of Illinois. But I'm just saying, we have to all come in, come together around this. And it's not the them and us, or the turfism and that kind of thing. So I don't know how we do it, but we all need to do it together. Otherwise, we're all going to go belly up. And already, we don't have a budget for the state of Illinois, and pretty soon, maybe, maybe we won't be able to provide education, public education. Who knows from the top down?
I have one, one quick last thing to say. And Dr. Danae Karat, I regret that my comments appeared irresponsible to you.
No, no, not at all.
Because there's a lot of things that I am, but irresponsible is not one of them. And again, I look at the options A, B, and C that are presented as a part of this that have not appeared. And two of those options do not call for that three-tier system. And I would like to echo what Mr. Adler said, which is, all I'm looking for is dialogue. And it, and it appeared to the folks who contacted me that this was fait accompli and that it was a done deal. Now, I understand that there are surveys coming in, and I look forward to those as well. Oh, can somebody fill out more than one survey?
They do it online, probably.
It ties for email address.
It ties, so once you have an email address, you can't put in more than one?
Correct.
Okay, good. And these are all online?
Yes.
And, and how do we access information and opinions from those who don't have access online?
We'll, we'll have computers set up at parent-teacher conferences next week for both this and the organs donation, and several different things we're doing. So this will have.
They can also go to the public library and access our webpage and, yeah.
And they can do it on their cell phones as well.
And you can do it on your cell phones as well, right. But Dr. Bob, no worries. It's all, it's all, it's, it's just, it would be irresponsible if we didn't say, hey, board, here's an opportunity, because that's what we were charged with, go balance the budget. You guys said to us, go balance the budget. And we're like, hey, here's an opportunity, this is how we can do it. So that's, I mean, it's, it's a comment for the board, everybody, right?
One question.
Yeah, Mr. Shaw.
Just, I just want to make sure I understand that the survey data pending, this recommendation is not final? is not final, these recommendations are not final, is that correct?
We are not asking for action on the transportation recommendations tonight. We are asking for action on the education fund, mainly because that affects some of our day-to-day operations on hiring.
Oh, with staffing, which we have an April 1 deadline.
So the transportation piece.
There's no action on that.
No action, question.
We want an opportunity to address the survey results and see if there's any adjustments we can make to help our families.
The survey is still open until, through parent-teacher conferences, which will go on until this week.
Thank you. Yeah, a question from Mr. Willis. Where are we at for the state level of funding on transportation? Have we even gotten all of our payments from last year in yet?
Yes. We got all last year's, we've not got any for this year yet.
Any?
No.
And we only get 70%. We never get 100% or a...
Yeah, so it's scheduled to be priority at 69. something percent. I don't know.
When they get to it, so.
We'd like to do those things.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. There are no more questions, thank you.
Carly and Josh have taken the real lead on program budget committee discussions the first three or four months. I'd like to public everything, both of them. A lot of our conversations revolved around transportation. A lot of those conversations have revolved around education fund, programs, and that kind of thing. And those guys have done yeoman's work, just in terms of being thorough, in terms of brainstorming, coming up with great ideas, and just flushing those out and having, leading us all through conversations around that. So I wanted to make sure that we did say thank you to those guys, and they've done an incredible job.
Yeah. And how many meetings have you held?
We've had 10 official meetings and then also subcommittee meetings.
And you've engaged parents and...
Yeah, parent groups. It's been a really, a good process, but it's been painful.
And the surveys are actually tied to IP addresses, not email addresses, so we just wanted to make that clarification.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Adler.
Thanks, Jim.
Just as we transition here to the public comment period, just wanted to kind of re-clarify. We've touched on it a little bit here already tonight, but, so we know from comment cards and emails, many of you want to speak on the three-tier bell system, and that's totally But just to clarify, we're not taking any action on that transportation recommendation tonight, so there will be more time for input, but you're welcome to speak your piece tonight as well. And Board Policy does say that we typically have a cutoff of 20 minutes on any one topic. However, the Board does have discretion to go ahead and waive that at any time. So anyways, that's just some preface to the public comment period.
Thank you. We are now at the place on our agenda that provides an opportunity for members of the community to address the board with your comments and suggestions. There are some issues we are not at liberty to discuss in public, such as personnel and other executive session topics. However, if you have a specific personal concern that needs to be addressed, we will have a staff person help you. In addition, board members' phone numbers and emails are listed on the website, PSD150.org. When you are recognized, please come to the podium and state your name for our records. Each person will be given five minutes to speak. Total time on any one subject shall be not to exceed 20 minutes without the consensus of the full board. We have also installed a comment box for your convenience. Our board secretary will collect those comments and compile them and share them with the board and superintendent. As a reminder, no one under age 18 may address the board unless accompanied by a parent, guardian, or teacher without the consent of the majority of the board. Our first speaker is Mr. Servino Sierra.
He left.
He left? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Terry Nepp.
Yes, a little bit of history, I think's important. My mother and my aunt lived out on Plank Road when they were in grade school and walked to Pleasant Hill up Harmon Highway and across, you know, probably a couple miles. They walked into Manuel, the old Manuel, I understand you remember the old Manuel. They walked up Harmon Highway and then down past the new Manuel, you know, mud, mud roads, road carts, and so forth to get to school. They didn't have buses. My point is this, we had K-8 schooling in Peoria, neighborhood schools. I never saw a school bus the whole time I was in school. I never saw a school bus. You know, my friends that were Kingman never saw a school bus. We closed the neighborhood schools and built the monstrosities at Lincoln and Glen Oak. Okay, beautiful schools, whatever, 900 kids, 1,000 kids, pack them in, you know, pack them in, bus them here, bus them there. We closed Woodruff, closed Woodruff, 900 kids at Woodruff, put them on buses to Manuel and Central so the Quest School could have, you know, what, 39 kids in their graduating class last year? And you educators think that quality education's going on with 39 seniors in class, 42 this year and 44 next year? Not happening. And we totally disenfranchised the whole North Side, put them on buses to Manuel Central where they weren't accepted to begin with. I've told you the monster stories, and if you want me to repeat them, I'll repeat them sometime. It's just important to me to understand why busing, you know, we're going to have seat belts next year, people, it's going to be a law. Who's going to monitor the seat belts on the buses? Busing is going to increase in cost. It's not going to decrease in cost. I mean, as we have these accidents and kids get hurt, if they're not bussed in, you better have great liability insurance, you know? And that's just another problem down the road. And we're here, and I understand we're here, and we really can't back up, but you've got to figure a way to decrease busing. I want to congratulate Dr. Karat. You know, the previous superintendent, Ms. Ross, you were on the board, and you've talked about it. How in the world do we ever allow people across the street, around the corner, be bused to school free? And we got the people, we got the people hooked on the drug, and now they can't get off the drug. Why aren't my kids bused now? Because for six years, the previous superintendent bused them wherever they wanted to go. We took buses from the inner city, 45 minutes to Charter Oak, and 45 minutes out to Lindbergh, put them on buses 45 minutes each way. Inner-city kids made it a $10 day for these little kids to get on this bus. Squat shop laws. We talk about kids working 10 hours a day a year, and Asia making Nike shoes, which I have on, I'm not proud of it, but I wear Nikes because I'm a Jordan fan. But my point is this, we can't, we can't say, oh, we had the money, we were in the block. No, we're not in the block. We've never been in the block for the last 10 or 15 years. I used to listen to Mr. Floyd sit at that seat up where Mr. Adler is and tell us, oh, Mr. Treasurer, we're in the block. Tell Mr. Knapp we're in the block. I don't understand it. You are the responsible people that need to control education, and increasing busing is not one way to do that. And the closure of Woodruff was abominable, and you should all be ashamed of yourself.
Ms. Sharon Cruz.
I am sure that I am not the only one who is pleased to see the end of the unwelcome practice of staff reduction at the end of the year. I believe this action is a great start to ending future teacher shortages. I'm glad that you are seeking ways to collect unpaid bills, student fees. The district can't afford to lose this money any longer. Also, students need to learn that it is their responsibility to take care of their textbooks and not to lose them. My guess is that eliminating IB programs at the primary and middle school levels will not have an extremely negative effect on teaching, and of course, money will be saved. I am glad to hear that you might put an end to holding the staff's back-to-school event at Bradley's Renaissance Coliseum. In fact, I would be willing to bet that almost everyone would rather spend the day getting ready for the first day of classes and meeting with their own faculties at their own schools. The beginning of school event itself has never been a crowd pleaser. I do believe that the only real solution to the transportation problem is neighborhood K-8 schools and reopening Woodruff and closing Quest. Until then, we'll have this same argument every year. All in all, I believe that your cost-cutting measures are actually good for students, teachers, and schools. I am pleased to see that at least a couple of high school courses will be offered in summer school. Of course, I won't be happy until I see the return of a full-scale high school summer school and no mention of credit recovery. Thank you.
Ms. Marie Lindahl?
She left.
Lindahl?
She left.
She left? Okay. Pastor Harvey Burnett?
Thank you very much. I'm Harvey Burnett, and I, mostly, discussion around the horse here tonight has really kind of addressed my concerns. I sent out an email to you all earlier today outlining a few concerns, and I thank you for listening to the public. We were told that this was going to be a hard and fast decision made tonight, so I don't know exactly what type of information was in the air there, but thank you for listening. Thank you for taking the time to ferret through this particular instance. I think the commentary that we've heard about the financial conditions of this entire city and what a decision like this does for a vast population of our citizens is very concerning. We are glad that, you know, we just happen to be in a state that doesn't feel the urgency to really kind of balance the budget or fund schools properly, and so we're kind of caught in that crunch, we realize that, and these are tough decisions. But thank you for taking your time with this decision, listening to the public, and listening to those that are affected. One of the things that I was concerned about was after-school athletics. You know, you've got schools, the two-hour variances, and parents are spending a great deal of money. Estimates are about $10 billion annually for 12 and under youth activities to get their children ready to receive some of that $4 billion that's spent annually in scholarships to just try to hope that they go to school. And we don't want to just drop the ball and cut off opportunities for our children. We have some talented children in this area, and we have some great coaches, Coach Booth and different ones, and so we want to kind of maximize those opportunities and kind of take our time. I know they're tough decisions. I don't envy your positions at all, either one of you, but thank you very much for taking your time with this. Thank you.
Ms. Cheryl Lynn Hester.
I'm a rookie to this, so, you know, I'm not coming up here to chew y'all out or none of that. My concerns is the tier one, the tier two, tier three, with the letting the older kids get out later and letting the young kids get out earlier. Like you spoke on, that we are single parents that need to have our older kids help us get our babies out of school. Y'all got to think about them crossing, my baby crossing Sheridan by himself without his sister going to get him. I can't, I can't deal with that. That's going to be on my brain the whole time I'm at work. Just, it's just too much right now to just go through and just try to change it now all of a sudden. No, we got to do, we got to, like, work around their schedule. That's, I'm working around their schedule. I do, I go to their after-school programs. I'm one of the moms that's in the school and do the after-school programs. I'm not like one of the moms that be out in the club and kicking it. I don't do none of that. I'm here for my kids, and yes, you think making them go, letting the older kids go to school later, that's going to be more dropouts. They don't feel like, oh, I'm going to school later, I can stay up later, I can be out later and all that. Y'all got to think about all that. The single moms, I'm not going to say I'm poor, but I ain't that poor. I can take my child to school. If that's going to cut out the budget, y'all, and I already cut out some of the budget for the school, for the, you know, dropping them off and picking them up. Only my oldest gets the bus. My youngest, I drop him off and pick him up when I can, when I'm off. And then that, she's picking him up, and, you know? So that's a big help. We got to, y'all got to think about these things before y'all just decide that y'all want to change them. And I thank you, and I thank you. I don't know y'all by names, because this is my first time ever coming to a school board meeting, because that was my concern, is my kids and their safety. So that's all I'm thinking about. If y'all could just think about that for me, that'd be a great deal. And I'm not just speaking behalf of myself, I'm speaking behalf of other mothers, other single mothers, because I done put it on Facebook, I'm like, go fill out the survey, y'all, survey, 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 come to this meeting, come to this meeting. And all I'm like, speak for me, speak for me, but y'all not here speaking for yourselves. I only got two that I'm worried about, and my friends got multiple kids. So they should be the ones here too with me, speaking on behalf of their children. So that's all I'm saying. I'm not here to argue and fight. I usually, whatever y'all do, I agree, but this one I can't agree on. And I think y'all should let me come up here and speak. Y'all, we just got to get it together.
Ms. Virginia Clark.
Hi, I'm Virginia Clark. Thank you for this opportunity. Ms. Karat, you know, I love you.
Love you too.
But this is one thing that I'm against also. I'm a single mother, a proud single mother of two young men, 25, no, one turned 26 yesterday, and my other one will be 16. United States Marine. My son goes to Central, and I work over here at Von Steuben. One thing I thought about was, my sons are night and day, so one, I have a little more problems with. So I'm thinking, I'm at school, he's at home. He's ADHD, his mind, he just does whatever comes to his mind. He does, he doesn't think about it, he just reacts. I'm on my son 24/7. Central principals and the teachers will let you know. I email every teacher every Monday to find out what's going on, what homework, what are they studying, what tests are coming up, because I'm on my son. Me and his dad is at the school. He's in every sport to keep him busy, to keep that mind active. If he's out of school and I'm still in school, that's taking my part away from him. I run my own business after school. That would start taking my time away from my business to help fund for my child. So if I'm at school, my business goes down, my son is alone, well, who are we helping? What do I give up? It's just like the insurance, do I pay for my medication or do I pay my SICO bill? I refuse to let my son fall into the cracks. I'm like that young lady there. I don't go to the clubs, I'm associate minister at my church. I work with the youth, I feed the homeless. I'm out there in the community. I love the kids that I work with. I work with the behavior kids. One thing that my kids told me in my classroom was, Ms. Clark, do you know that's going to allow more time for the kids to go to the corner stores to get blank papers so they can smoke? Do y'all know how many kids are coming to school high now? Do you know how many are coming drunk? Literally Hennessy bottles. This is happening. If we leave this open for our children, we leave them to run rapid. I don't understand what is going to change. I'm like her too. My son rides the bus to Central, but periodically, the bus has been late. I have been getting calls from the automated service saying my son has missed a class because he can't even get to school on time. Today, I talked to the bus driver because they added another group of kids on, she pulled up at 7:24. I have to be at school at 7:30, so I picked him and two other kids up off the bus stop and took them to school because they were still standing there. My thought is, we got to think about our children. Like she said, you say 9:15, kids think, I can stay up a little longer, I can run the streets a little bit longer, because there's not all parents out there like us that make, my son can't run the streets, not at all. that make, my son can't run the streets, not at all. But there are some who's out there at 11 o'clock at night because parents are gone or whatever it is they're doing. So when they get to school, now I'm still tired, or I'm not gonna go, or I'm gonna show up at 12. Then who's gonna hold who accountable for that?
I'm my main here.
We gotta, it's a lot to think about. And I understand what we need to do and what we trying to do. I understand that, 'cause I'm trying to save money too. We're all trying to save money and make it. But at the rate we're going right now, I have a grandchild coming up, and Lord knows, I am praying that I can afford to send him to private school. 'Cause I see what is going on. I'm there every day. I'm talking to the kids. And I mean, if you had a forum and just sat down with some of these kids and talked about issues, it's a lot going on. There's a lot going on besides time change. You got kids can't read, can't spell, can't do basic math. What are we setting them up for? Thank you.
Ms. Vanetta Watson?
My name is Vanetta Watson. Um, I'm coming on behalf of my 15-year-old daughter. She goes to Quest, and I put her in Quest coming out of Calvin College because I was looking for a change. I was looking for something different, something more like a, um, pretty much like a private type school is what I was looking for. She was an honor roll student at Calvin College, and it was a struggle for me to take her out of there, but I was looking for greater, and I thought that Quest would be greater. She still remains an honor roll student there, but I have to push her and push her from all the pre-pressure after school, from all of the behavioral issues in the classroom. And I had found myself going over there to talk to the kids. I was repelled to go over there and just talk to one class and challenge them from that day forward, after I left there, that they would think about, this is not just all of the school team in Peoria. I mean, we have to have advocates in there that can share with them about what is, what is significant and why are they there. They, they come, come to school with a lot of issues. They come to school with broken homes. They come to school with don't having anything, probably haven't even eaten. But they come with these issues, and I'm not just talking about Quest kids, I'm talking about the schools all across Peoria. And for you all to make decisions that will alter a family is devastating. I just think that I, I came here, this is my first time here, and I came here to decide if I wanna keep her in Quest. But I'm a little worried that that might not be a good idea right now, because there's a lot of things that's going on in the rich woods and the manual schools that I'm concerned with in its behavior. I hear a lot of different things that the elite program is, you know, doing some great things in that, and I appreciate that, but there's still issues going on. And there's issues going on with each and every child that have behavior issues, and they're not being addressed like I think it should be because they're acting out. And it's affecting the kids that wanna learn. So, um, I'm just here to just voice an opinion. I thank God for the people, you guys. I mean, I don't know, um, all of the ins and outs of what you all are supposed to, you know, implement in the schools far as, you know, education and transportation, but the time change did repel me to come here because I am concerned, I have my, this is my sister, this is my sister, and my nephews I am concerned about. They need help, and we need help, and I'm just here to support every parent and everybody that's in District 150.
Ms. Constance Jackson?
Hi, my name is Constance Jackson. I'm here to address the three-tier proposition. I too thought that this was something that was be set in stone today. I wanna say that I work in the 61605, I don't live in the 61605, so I don't think it's just limited to a 61605 issue. I live in the 61614. I have a 3,000 square foot home, and it still doesn't change the fact that we struggle, okay? So this is just how a decision can affect little old me. Now, I'm an employee of the district. I decided to work for the district because I'm like the Toys R Us kid. I don't wanna grow up. I like coaching. I'm not one that has a fancy title, I'm not a principal, I'm not one of the big ones, I'm one of the behind-the-scenes. So my paycheck on my portion outside of my husband requires me to take on three coaching jobs, my main job, and volunteering any other paid stipend to, that's associated with kids to make ends meet still, even having additional income. With that said, I speak, I understand as an employee that the potential changes, we're talking about maybe contracts. I hear people talking about maybe they have to talk about contract changes or whatever. That's one facet. The next facet, like I said, I'm not 61605, I pay property taxes. When I look at just my portion of my salary, which is not, is very mediocre, 11% of my salary is what we pay District 150 in property tax. So I feel that my, that I should have a voice in this decision as a working contributor, as a paying contributor. The next part is, I'm a mom. Between me and my husband, we have 7.5 kids. We are at Charter Oak, Hines, Von Steuben, and Central. We do utilize the busing because with my child being in the performing arts, he is at a district. We were prepared, if there was going to be a fine, to bus him, to pay that fine, but let me just give you the implication. All of the schools, while we're sending the babies to school first, or we're proposing to send the babies to school first and get out of school first, not all of the schools offer before-after care. Those that do, my expenses last year for before and after care for my child is a hun, was $55 each week for my nine, eight-year-old. Then there's my stepchildren where we have to pay, I believe it was $50, and that was just on Mondays, every other Monday and Wednesday. The time change, I'm looking at the financials. Calling around for before and after care price quotes, and the price increases, you're asking me to take on an additional $24.84 in my income towards that. So I'm paying property tax, I feel like an underpaid employee, and now I got an additional $2400 expense. Plus, after watching the presentation, I'm gonna pay, what, $105 per child that rides the bus, so $105 times five of my kids, I have an additional $525 that you just added to my budget as a proposal. So I come to you as a mom that says, I don't like the tier change because currently I'm able to have a middle schooler or a high schooler that gets off the bus at the same time that Hines lets out to go walk and pick up the children from Hines and bring them to the house. I'm lucky enough that if you do go through this, I live right by Hines. There's kids that don't. There's Knoxville, there's other, I mean, there, I drive home and any given month, that intersection between Knoxville and Glen, there is an accident every single week when I drive to my house, every single week. Last year or the year before, there was a student that got hit on the same street that my two kids pick, get on their bus. So I don't see how somebody else's child that has to walk across that street where a middle schooler got hit by a car would be okay to walk across that same street at potentially 7 o'clock, 6:45, or whatever time in the morning when it's still dark during the daytime, and to track their way to class. So I just have a problem with that. Now, I was able to wrap my head around it a little bit better with your presentation, but I couldn't understand how, as a coach for three sports that has encountered transportation issues, how two tiers in after-school activities somehow gonna work itself with three tiers in after-school activities. So the boy's gonna do what the boy's gonna do. I'm not anybody important, but I just wanna say that I speak on the fence of an employee, the one that's a mom, the one that's a tax payer.
Wrap up a little bit.
And I, I am, I'm sorry. What I'm saying is, I understand, accounting is my background. That's what I do for the district. I can save money not getting my kids a shot. That doesn't mean that I won't pay for when they get sick down the line. That's all I got to say.
Okay. First on the information items, the first reading of update policy 4:152 honoring distinguished persons and inspiring our students. Did you want, did anybody have any questions on that? Any of the policies? And then we also have 6:300 graduation requirements and 7:240 conduct code for participants in extracurricular activity. Any good to respond to that?
Right. Right. Did anyone have any, any questions, or did you wanna comment, Mr. Ripberg?
Well, I mean, uh, conduct code policy 7240, I included that with the update Friday, and generally, this is an update to bring our current policy in the line with the press model policy. But the press model policy contains an optional section to it, and we talked about it in the policy committee, and the thought was to bring it before the board and see if anybody is interested in this idea. And if, if there is interest, we'll continue to look at it. If not, we'll stop talking about it. And that's the question of a random drug testing program for students to participate in extracurricular activities. I also provided you with just a little bit of material to talk about the perceived efficacy of these tests, at least the one author whose article I gave you suggested that the research shows that by themselves, the drug testing programs don't reduce drug use in kids, but only if they're as part of a larger program. So I guess what I, what I hope we might have is a brief discussion on the board, and is there, is there interest in pursuing this sort of thing or not?
Where did the original interest come from?
Say that again?
Where did the original interest come from?
Oh, nobody's pushing this. It's simply a matter of, we're updating the policy, and...
But this is not what, we're not talking about that at, on this policy, right?
This is on, on policy 7240, code of conduct for participants in extracurricular activities.
Oh, okay.
It's, um, it's on page two, it's the second, the first paragraph on page two, or it's the first paragraph.
So, Mr. Ripberg, maybe you could clarify what the press model policy is, how that kinda gets us around to some of the different policies?
Well, press is a service of the Illinois Association of School Boards, and they have a group of people who, who develop model policies. And generally speaking, our policy manual follows the press, you know, model policies. Our numbering system is nearly identical. We customize many of the policies that come from press, but that's how the, how the policies come about. And there's no requirement that any district have a, a, a random drug testing program for, for extracurricular students. The idea is that participating in extracurriculars is, is not a right, it's a privilege, and, you know, people have a particular interest in reducing the use of drugs in the schools, that there are, there are people, some people in, in the community who may have strong opinions that, that this is the way to go. But again, nobody, nobody has really brought this forward. It's just, it's in the model policy, we're going to be presenting some changes to you from the model policy, and the question is, really, it's, it's a board decision whether or not you wanna have that sort of a program.
My personal opinion is that I have no interest in including that as part of our policy. I feel like the imposition of a random drug test model that only targets those who participate in extracurricular activities improperly targets specific people. And I'm, I don't have any interest to go down that route. So the board may have other thoughts, but that's me.
Ms. Jackson?
I thank you, Mr. Adler, because I was gonna say that I totally agree. I think it's, it's, it could be, have a disparate impact on African-Americans and other minorities. Mr. Adler said it gently.
Mr. Wilder?
I did want to say that. Basically, I just think, you know, as much as we've got on our plate right now with those, I don't think we need to add another thing with it. So I'm comfortable with the recommended changes without going into the added one. If this is something we're looking at discussing, I think that may be something for future date. We could add it at that time.
I'm not willing to talk about it.
Yeah, the questions on the proposed, the first reading of these three proposed policy updates. Okay.
Thank you.
Proposed expenditures, over $2,500. Any questions? Of Mr. Willis. Seeing none, report of request under the Freedom of Information Act.
Thank you, President Ross. Thank you, President Ross. Since our last board meeting on February 21st, we received two new requests. Of these requests, one was filled. There were two pending requests noted on February 21st. These were also filled. To date, we have received 15 requests for this calendar year at a cost of $6,062. $6,062, no sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Consent agenda, Mr. Adler.
Oh, I can't wait to say number 12. The consent agenda tonight consists of following items. Item number one, gifts to the school district this meeting, $10,155. Year-to-date, $193,693.13. Item number two, the payment of bills. Item number three, payment for travel. Item number four, the human resources report. Item five, board policy 6:280, grading and promotion. Item number six, the field trip approval for Richards High School International Baccalaureate seniors to St. Louis, Missouri. Item seven, IHSA membership. Item eight, charter bus rental. Item nine, course approval, the AP World History. Item 10, course approval for dual-credit literature, 110, 111. Item number 11, contract for purchase of 1731 North Street, Peoria, Illinois. Item 12 is a contract with Exposition Gardens Incorporated for the purchase of two pieces of real estate, the Northmore School parking lot, and two for a new Transportation Department employees parking lot. And item number 13 is the health clinic bid approval. And that is the entirety of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Are there any items any board member would like pulled for a separate vote or, and/or Seeing none, may I have a motion in a second?
I move that we adopt the entire consent agenda.
So, thanks. Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Is there any discussion on any of the 13 items?
I would like to personally thank Mr. Ripberg and any and all people involved in the over-two-year endeavor, which has been the negotiation with Expo Gardens Incorporated, and I am very excited to pass this and be done with it.
Hear ye, hear ye. Mr. Wilder?
Two points. I'm just, I'm grateful for the addition of the AP World History and the dual-credit literature. I came within about a tenth of a second of pulling number 12 and seeing if we could get a better deal on it, but I didn't want to see Mr. Adler. get a better deal on it, but I didn't want to see Mr. Adler. I would have accelerated my retirement immediately.
All right. Would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Dr. Davis and Aviles?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. On the deliberation agenda, dismissal of non-tenured teachers. Pro's action is that the Board of Education of the City of Peoria, School District 150, authorize the dismissal of non-reemployment of the non-tenured teachers named on the Human Resources Report effective at the end of the 2016-17 school year pursuant of Section 24-11 of the School Code, 105 ILCS 5/24-11, for reasons other than reduction enforced. May I have a motion?
So moved.
That has to be as amended.
As amended?
Yes, there was a change.
Okay.
So it's as amended.
So all that as amended?
So moved as amended.
Second as amended.
Okay, thank you. Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Dr. Davis and Aviles?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six ayes, motion carried.
Number 15, approval of the Program Budget Committee Education Fund recommendations Pro's action is that the Board of Education approve the following Program Budget Committee Education Fund recommendations as outlined in the presentations made by the board earlier. Made to the board early. Thank you. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Walter?
I have a couple of concerns with this, but I think, going along with what Ms. Jackson said, I think this may be one we may have to bite the bullet. I had some concerns about the AP program, but in checking with the administration, I think that really the accountability, there wasn't the amount of improvement that we've seen there to continue that. And so this is one of those tougher decisions I think I'm going to support that we need to do with this one.
Thank you. Other comments? Discussion items? Seeing none, would you call the roll?
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Dr. Davis and Aviles? Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six ayes, motion carried.
Number 16, suspension review. Ms. Jackson, are you reading?
I'm reading.
All right, thank you. Suspension review.
That the suspension review listed on the report dated March 20, 2017, be approved as amended.
I'm sorry. I was listening to you. That was good. Second. Yes, okay.
Any discussion? Seeing none, would you call a roll, please? Do you have a discussion, I guess?
No. All right. Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Dr. Davis and Aviles?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six ayes, motion carried.
Expulsions, number 17.
That expulsions listed on the report dated March 20, 2017, be approved as amended.
Second.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Dr. Davis and Aviles?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six ayes, motion carried.
Expulsions with the expulsions held in abeyance.
That expulsions with the expulsions held in abeyance listed on the report dated March 20, 2017, be approved as amended.
Second.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Dr. Davis and Aviles?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six ayes, motion carried.
Relocation of board probation.
That the relocation of board probation listed on the report dated March 20, 2017, be approved as amended.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Dr. Davis and Aviles?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six ayes, motion carried.
Presentations and suggestions by board members. Yes, sir.
The, what we just did regarding expulsions, expulsions in abeyance, et cetera, et cetera, I'd really like to say that it appears that this is perfunctory, that we do this, we don't discuss it. And at least, I don't want to talk to the rest of my colleagues, but I know they feel similarly. In any event, this is real serious stuff. And we know that. And I'm not quite so dramatic as to say this stuff keeps me up at night, but believe it or not, there are times it keeps me up at night. And we take very, very seriously what we do with every single one of our children and how we can make this a better place for every child. And I just want to make, and thank my colleagues for the amount of time and input and insights that they have regarding these things. They are not perfunctory.
Thank you, Dr. Bob. Decisions like this are made, and I think it hurts all of us. And we've just got to come up with a way to deal with the issues that come before us and do it in a way that's compassionate and caring, but still making a point. So thank you for commenting that because it does concern me and keep me up.
Should we wish a German happy birthday today?
Oh, you just take it.
I'd like to wish the German happy birthday.
Thank you.
The Mexicans.
I'm sorry.
Exactly.
I thought it was the sugar they had everybody.
Mr. Walter?
Yeah, I just wanted to compliment the district and the SRO unit for reaching a settlement. We have the last contract, and the district has an agreement for this year. And so I just thank both sides for working together to get that finished.
Well, I don't, I don't know what to suggest since presentation and suggestions by board members. But one of my goals over the years has been to try to get parents involved in their kids' education, more involved in their kids' education. I mean, I'm not saying that they're not involved, but we've created a parent university to help educate people regarding the education and how they could be involved in the education of their children. We'd still like to invite people to come out. You know, when I hear parents having concerns, I'd like to see them get involved. I mean, maybe I've been too involved, but I sat in my kids' classrooms, I sat in my grandkids' classrooms, and they had problems back even then, you know. I think I had pretty good kids, but the grandkids were challenging. I used to go to their classroom and pull up a chair and sit next to them. So, yeah, we have a lot of problems that could be addressed, but we need the parents to help us do that. We need the community. We need everyone to help us do that because the school district can't do it alone. So if I could figure, if anyone could figure out how to get parents involved, more involved, other than on conference days or when something is wrong or goes wrong, please, you know, send us some ideas. Send them to Dr. Karat because I'm not a staff person. But the fact is, we just need to get the parents involved in, more involved in what we have to do here because we all have a responsibility. If one arm fail, everybody fails. Any other suggestions or presentations by board members?
Put in a three-tiered bus system. I think maybe, I'm sorry. I am going to apologize. Sorry.
I reached 50 at the end of the meeting. Billings Committee has a meeting scheduled for April 5th to revisit Peoria Stadium once again.
What time?
Eight, 8:00 a.m.
And I believe you have a committee meeting tomorrow night?
Yes.
Okay. But you're going to talk about what time?
Five o'clock.
Community relations. Okay. Five o'clock here.
Yep. Policy Committee, Wednesday, April 19th at 9:30.
So everyone and anyone are welcome?
Yes.
April 19th?
15.
Oh, yours, okay. All right. Anything else for the good of this business, of this Peoria public school?
President Ross, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. Sure off the mark tonight.